All those in favor signify by staying an eye.
Aye.
I need a motion to certify the closed session that the only items we discussed in closed session were those items in the enabling motion and those in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act and in accordance with the Code of Virginia. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Just remember, please.
Alright.
Thank you. Ms. Auburn?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Reifler?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. And we have no motions out of closed session. Therefore, we're going to move to the next item on our agenda, and that's honors, awards, and recognition. And this is where the board sets aside time to honor all of our outstanding students and various other activities that occur within the school division. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Walt Shannon, Assistant Superintendent. After we do have this, we will have a short break so that board members can congratulate those receiving awards this evening and also for the audience if they would too extend a congratulations as well.
Our first recognition tonight is for our seniors of the month. This time, we'll recognize Nelson Simkins, our Director of Secondary Education, who will introduce this program.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the audience. It's always a special highlight at our board meeting, second meeting of the month, for the recognition of a senior of the month from each of our four high schools. Tonight, we recognize our February seniors. Their photos and leadership profiles are displayed on easels in the outer lobby, and I invite everyone, as you depart or go in the lobby tonight, to take a look at those presentations. They're pretty impressive. Our presentation format provides a snapshot of each senior in their own words of how they view themselves. I know you'll enjoy each student's comments, as they always are informative and insightful. Now, it's my pleasure to present our principals to you, who will make the formal introductions. First, from Auburn High School, Principal Carl Polly. He'll be followed tonight by Mr. Brian Kitz, Principal of Blacksburg High School. Dr. Kevin Sears, Principal of Christiansburg High School, will follow him. And Mr. Danny Knott, Principal of Eastern Montgomery High School, will do our last presentation. Mr. Polly.
Thank you, Mr. Simkins, members of the board, Ms. Blackburn, Mr. Jones. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce you to our February Senior of the Month. But before I do so, I just want to make sure my December Senior of the Month was supposed to be here, and I don't know if she's here. Is Hannah Bartnik here? Well, she said she was going to be here, but she didn't make it. Okay, so we'll proceed with our February Senior of the Month. At this time, I'd like to ask Sarah Smith to come forward with her mom and dad, Michael and Robin Smith, and I understand her sister is with her this evening as well, if they would all come forward and stand here. As Mr. Simkins said, let me just tell you a few things about Sarah in Sarah's own words. Sarah believes that many of her friends would say that she is a very sweet, kind, and respectful person. She added, "I also always work my hardest at everything I do. I am someone people can trust. I am not one to gossip, and people feel safe talking to me. I think they would also see how much I love God and show it in my life." The most meaningful activity that Sarah has been a part of during her high school years is softball. Of this experience, she said, "I love it, and it has taught me a lot through the years. It has shown me how to trust in others to do their job and the importance of being the best you can be. I have learned to respect everyone around me, no matter what." Sarah said that the dual enrollment courses she has taken at Auburn High School have helped to prepare her for life as a college student. She explained, "The structure of the classes and the student engagement have helped me open up to different views and express them in a constructive and non-offensive way." The most unforgettable experience that Sarah has had during high school was when she participated in the Beta Club food drive. She said, "We collected money for families that couldn't afford much during the holidays. I will never forget the way it felt giving back to the community and knowing I helped make their holidays a little brighter." Ten years from now, Sarah sees herself as having completed her education and practicing within her chosen field. She, Sarah, added, "The dedication of the Auburn staff and the guidance they have given me have been the most influential factors in preparing me for the future. School trips to local colleges have also shown me the numerous fields of study and has helped me choose the college that is best for me." Ladies and gentlemen, again, our Senior of the Month from Auburn High School, Sarah Smith.
Good evening. I'm proud to introduce Blacksburg High School Senior of the Month for February, Mr. Michael Ayers. Michael is escorted tonight by his mom and dad, Terry and David. Would you all please come forward? Michael says his friends would characterize him as kind, cool-headed, hard-working, and respectful to others. The most meaningful activity he's experienced during his years at Blacksburg High have been his involvement in basketball. He says it has taught me to respect others, work as a team, and learn to manage my time. In his four years at BHS, Michael says he has learned skills in time management, confidence, concentration, and effort. He says the school has helped me with this by challenging me to gain these attributes through presentation, clubs, and sports. Michael says his most unforgettable experience during his high school would have to be when a physical therapist came and spoke to his medical terminology class and helped him realize that this was a career that he wanted to pursue. In ten years, he sees himself in a field of physical therapy, helping people overcome injuries so that they may go on with their lives. He goes on to say, "My high school experience has helped me prepare for the future through challenging courses similar to my college major and creating an atmosphere for each student to work the best they can." Congratulations to Michael Ayers for being selected as Blacksburg High School's February Senior of the Month.
Good evening, members of the board and Ms. Blackburn. I'm very pleased to present to you Christiansburg High School Senior of the Month for February, Luke Warner-Williams. And I ask at this time that he join me up front with his family. He's accompanied today by his mother, Kitty Williams, his sister Faith, and his brother Adam. In his own words, Luke stated, "My friends would characterize me as friendly and supportive. I always strive to push myself to new levels of academics in hopes that I can be a positive influence on others. I also try my best to interact with as many people at the high school as I can to create new friendships. The most meaningful activity I engaged in during my four years of high school was marching band. It is a sport that has no alternates. Therefore, everyone is important and must do their part. It has helped me to develop leadership skills and has shown me how to successfully and productively work with others. The CHS faculty has helped me to develop a passion for learning and the drive to push myself to excel at everything that I can. I have also developed an ability to constantly look for ways to assist my peers in reaching new heights. The teachers and faculty at CHS have helped me refine these skills by setting examples. The most unforgettable experience I had during my four years of high school was finding out that I was accepted into chamber ensemble at the end of my freshman year. It definitely opened me up to what I could achieve if I set my mind to it. That was the first major audition process that I'd ever been through. I see myself combining my passion for music with my interest in technology. I recently read about a group that is testing a cure for cancer with sound waves. I would like to study innovations like these in the future. School has definitely encouraged me to continue studying and practicing." And as usual, I always like to throw out a tidbit of information that I find out about students through this process. And as most of you know, as most of our seniors of the month this year have some ties to our music program, we have a very gifted and talented music program that is senior-heavy, and we're going to take a big hit when all these folks graduate at the end of the year. So I was happy today to find out that Luke actually skipped first grade and went straight to second. So I thought, well, maybe we can keep him on a technicality and have him back for one more year of music. So I searched the law books and unfortunately couldn't find anything, so I guess we will have to let him graduate. But it's my pleasure to present Mr. Luke Williams.
Ms. Blackburn, Mr. Jones, members of the board, it's my privilege tonight to introduce Eastern Montgomery High School's February Senior of the Month, Jacob East. Jacob is accompanied tonight by his father, mother, and mother, Carl and Wanda East, and his brother Jesse. If they'd come forward, please. These are Jacob's words. "My friends would characterize me as being nice, hard-working, and willing to help my friends out with almost anything. They might also refer to my football career because out of everything I have done throughout high school, I have devoted the most non-academic time that I've had in my efforts to help the Eastern Montgomery High School football team. The most meaningful activity I experienced throughout my four years of high school would be playing on our football team. This was meaningful because I have been able to go through pretty much everything you can think of with guys that I would consider to be my brothers. I have been part of a team when we were on top and also when things were not so good. This makes me really appreciate the experience altogether. Through this experience, I have learned to be a leader, and I have picked up a strong work ethic along with the mindset that nothing is impossible if you work hard. Because of my strong work ethic, I have become good at being able to solve virtually any problem thrown at me. Eastmont has helped me develop this skill by always pushing me to work at everything and giving my all at everything I do. I have never been handed anything at EMHS which has greatly helped me become a better person. My most unforgettable high school experience would have to be our state semifinal game against Clintwood. I say this because of all the circumstances. Whether it be playing in four inches of snow, the scoreboard going out in the fourth quarter, or the blocked pass to give us the win, the game itself will be something I will never forget. I see myself being in the engineering field and starting my own family in ten years. My experiences at Eastmont have greatly helped me to prepare for my future. EMHS has helped me by teaching me how to work hard with people of varied abilities and work ethics and still be able to come out successful in the end. In my four years at Eastmont, I have developed the mindset that if you work hard at something, you can achieve whatever you want. My teachers and coaches have helped me develop this mindset by pushing me to my limits and making me work for everything I have achieved." He does have a strong work ethic, and we know he's going to go far and do well in the engineering field. Congratulations, Jacob.
Next, our recognition as a Title I Distinguished School. Recognize Dr. Loos Graham, our Director of Elementary Education, who will introduce this award.
Good evening. I would like to ask that Dom Sayah, the Assistant Principal, and Marcia Settle, the Principal from Auburn Elementary School, will come up and join me. It is my pleasure to share with you that Auburn Elementary School is being recognized by the Virginia Department of Education as a Title I Distinguished School for High Achievement. These awards are based on student achievement and state assessments from the 2011, 2012, and 2010-2011 school years. Auburn Elementary surpassed all state and federal accountability benchmarks and excelled in the standards of learning. In English and math, only thirty-seven schools in the state of Virginia achieved this honor. Additionally, I would like to share that Auburn Elementary will be recognized with an honorable mention at the Mid-Atlantic Family Engagement Summit in March for their outstanding efforts to engage parents through their Jump Start program. Congratulations to Auburn Elementary School.
Next is a recognition for our Winning Choices Program. Recognize Sharon Zuckawar, Supervisor of History, Social Studies, and many other things. Sharon.
Thank you. Good evening. For the past thirteen years, Montgomery County Public Schools, along with our four local Rotary Clubs, Virginia Tech Athletic Department, and the Virginia Tech Corps of Cadets, along with many businesses, have joined together to sponsor events and engage students in activities focused on making positive choices. As we've seen already tonight, we have many students that will soon lead our communities and our nation, and in recognition of this fact, the Winning Choices Community of Character Committee seeks to challenge students to realize their responsibility to make positive differences in the world. Each year, Montgomery County Public Schools students are encouraged to write an essay describing how good character traits help them make winning choices. Each school selects a winning essay, and its author receives a $100 gift card. Each school's winning essay is then sent to a judging committee made up of local Rotary members, and we select a winner from both the elementary, middle, high school, and then an overall countywide winner. And tonight, I'd like to recognize and introduce those students to you. So first, let's start with our elementary winner. I'd like to welcome Ms. Brianna Hurst, and she is escorted by her parents. We'll invite them up to the front, please. Brianna is a fifth grader at Falling Branch Elementary School, and she is the overall elementary winner for the Winning Choices Essay Contest this year. And Brianna wrote a very powerful and very moving essay about the importance of having a positive attitude, and she told the story from her own perspective and her own personal experiences, and how she's using those experiences to then help others who are dealing with similar situations. So we congratulate Brianna, and she will receive tonight not only a certificate but a gift card for $200. So congratulations, Brianna. Next, I'd like to invite Ms. Anya Robbins, and she is escorted by her parents as well. So let's invite Anya to the front with her family. So we want to congratulate Anya. She is a sixth grader at Auburn Middle School, and she wrote a very great essay about loyalty. And I just don't know, if you don't mind, I'm going to share just the first couple of sentences. She says, "We live in a world where selfishness is everywhere, and a loyal friend is hard to find. Loyalty, the ability to put the needs and feelings of others above your own, is important because without it, there would be no strong relationships or friendships. I believe loyalty is one of the most important character traits you can have." And Anya is our overall middle school winner, and again, will receive a certificate as well as $200 gift card. So congratulations to Anya. Next, I would like to invite Sydney Fane, as well as her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Fane, and her brother Lucas. Sydney is a junior at Auburn High School, and she is our overall high school winner. So she again will receive a certificate and $200 gift card, so we want to congratulate her. And one thing that I will say about all of our essay winners this year, our judges had a very hard time selecting winners. They actually told me on several occasions how hard it was and how powerful the essays were this year. And I will say that Sydney's essay was extremely moving, and she talks about self-advocacy and being an advocate for yourself and being empowered to make choices for yourself, and truly to help all of us overcome adversity that we face in life. And we thank Sydney for sharing her story in her essay. So congratulations to Sydney. And we have one final student to recognize tonight. I would like to invite Kaitlin Williard and her parents to the front, please. I'd like to introduce you to Kaitlin Williard and her family. Kaitlin is a senior at Blacksburg High School, and she is the countywide winner for Winning Choices Essay Contest. So our judges select one at each level, and then they select one essay to represent the entire county. So we congratulate Kaitlin. She will tonight win a, receive a certificate as well as a $500 gift card. So we congratulate Kaitlin. Her essay inspired our judges and inspired all of those of us who were able to read them about her experiences working in and for her community. And we all know, when you are volunteering your time and your energy, sometimes you're not always met with a lot of graciousness at times. So she talks in her essay about overcoming those challenges and challenging herself to always make the right choice and to do what's right as she works for others. So we want to congratulate Kaitlin and wish her well as she moves on to do more things in our community. So congratulations. And I thank you for the opportunity to recognize these students.
Where can we read these essays?
We can make those available.
And what about for the public?
I would like to check with all of the authors first to make sure that they're willing to do that, but those that are willing, and we can certainly make those available. And thank you all for the opportunity to recognize these students.
Our next is the recognition of new National Board Certified Teachers. Recognize Laura Williams, our grant writer and supervisor of many inherited things recently.
Good evening. National Board Certification is an advanced teaching credential achieved upon successful completion of a voluntary assessment program. This program is designed to recognize effective and accomplished teachers who meet high standards based on what teachers should know and be able to do to advance student learning and achievement. As part of the process, candidates complete ten assessments. These include four portfolio entries that feature teaching practice and six response exercises that assess content knowledge. MCPS currently employs thirty-four National Board Certified Teachers with seven additional teachers who are working towards their certification currently. We have two teachers who are being recognized this year for achieving certification by the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. One of them was able to be here with us tonight, so I'd like to have Colleen Anderson come up. And we also have Heather Cromer, who was not able to be with us tonight, but I'll tell you a little bit about each of them. Colleen is a reading specialist at Price's Fork Elementary School. Prior to joining the Price's Fork team, she served as a reading specialist at Harding Avenue Elementary. She received her master's in reading from the University of Virginia in 2007 and trained to become a reading recovery teacher in 2009. She's very grateful to the students and staff of MCPS for assisting her in taking advantage of opportunities that allow her to grow as a teacher. Colleen has earned her National Board Certification in the area of literacy, reading, language arts, early middle childhood. We're also recognizing Heather Cromer. Heather is a special education teacher at Kipps Elementary School. She has taught special education at the elementary level in MCPS for five years. She completed her master's degree at Redford University in 2008 and received the Certificate of Autism Studies in 2011. She currently serves as an autism case manager for MCPS and truly learns something new each day from her students. Heather earned her National Board Certification in the area of early childhood through young adulthood exceptional needs specialist. So we'd like to congratulate both these nationally board, National Board Certified Teachers.
Next, we'll recognize the school superintendent for the next recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. The month of February is recognized by the Virginia School Boards Association as School Board Appreciation Month. This year's theme is "School Boards Speak Out for Public Schools," and I've watched you do that so very, very eloquently many times, and reflects the school board's efforts to advocate and shape the direction of public schools in the county and in the state. Tonight, it is my pleasure to honor our board members for their service. I will be presenting each member with a certificate and a portfolio with the new Montgomery County Public Schools logo. Again, I thank you for your tireless service on behalf of our students, schools, and community. First, Phyllis Albritton. Come on down. Next, Jamie Bond. Next, Dreama Foster. Penny Franklin. Jo Iverson. Sarah Woolsey. And last, but certainly not least, our Chair, Mr. Wendell Jones.
This concludes our recognitions. Oh, one more. Alright. Surprised me.
Our school board would not run nearly as efficiently as if we didn't have the hard work of our school board clerk, Ms. Brenda Drake. And at this time, I would like, you know, every organization has what I term the glue and the behind-the-scenes people that keep us going. Brenda, thank you so much for being that glue that keeps us together and keeping us straight and making sure we're doing the right things behind the scenes. I don't care how many emails you send me to pester me to do the right thing, that's what you're paid to do. So, on behalf of the Montgomery County School Board and certainly the staff and the citizens, because I know you interact well with the citizens as well, we thank you for your tireless efforts and your dedication and service to this board. And with that, I have a token of our appreciation and a certificate.
At this time, that concludes our recognitions. The board will take a five-minute break, give the board members a chance to greet those who've been recognized tonight. We'll convene in about five minutes. Back to order, please. Back to order, please. I begin the next agenda item by, we've had a bit of technical difficulty with the projection equipment this evening, and we will bring the screens down for the presentations only, but it's a bit distracting, so right now we're going to leave the screens up and use them only for presentations. Apologize for the inconvenience. The next item on our agenda is public address, and this is where the board sets aside three minutes, a maximum of three minutes per citizen, to address the board on items of educational interest. And at this time, we have about 12 people signed up, so I'm going to call a, one name and to come up, and I'm also calling the next person if they would come up and be staged behind them. We do have a lighting system on the podium, and we're going to operate this evening. Of course, it's green. When you start out, when you hit 30 seconds, it will turn yellow, and when three minutes is up, it turns red, and we ask that you honor that in order for the other guests to be able to speak. With that, the first person signed up for public address is Katie Minnick. And after Ms. Minnick is Michelle Wilkins. If you will step forward, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Katie Minnick. I reside in Radford, and I've been a teacher of special education at Blacksburg Middle School for the past 11 years. At the February 5th school board meeting, Ms. Foster asked to see schedules of students and teachers and how the proposed changes to the middle school schedule will impact them. I know that Mr. Simpkins plans on showing the board just that in his later presentation, however, I wanted to share the positives of the current schedule and how it benefits students. More specifically, are students at risk of failure for the math and reading SOLs? Currently, students at our school can receive an additional class for remediation of reading skills and an additional class for remediation of math skills whenever there's a concern of failure of an upcoming SOL. This provides the at-risk students with 84 to 90 minutes a day of reading and English and 84 to 90 minutes a day of math in two separate class periods. These additional classes used for remediation are often small in numbers and are more specialized to individual students' weaknesses and areas of need. I feel that this current structure best meets the individual students' needs, allowing for flexibility of students' schedules as education is not a one-size-fits-all experience. These valuable academic math labs, which provide all of the math remediation, are taught by core math teachers. I fear that these will reduce, that these reductions in core content teachers and the increased student load will no longer give that flexibility for these math academic labs to continue, because not only will math teachers be expected to teach six classes daily, but their number of students taught will rise to as high as 150 students if as many as 19 core content teachers are lost due to attrition. So in order to keep PTR within acceptable ranges, there will no longer be a teacher available to teach that math academic lab. Our current schedule model, a number of teachers, provides the greatest flexibility for students and effectively uses teachers to provide students with what they specifically need to succeed. We have already lost teachers over the years to attrition and could do even more if those positions were restored. Please do not support changes involving reducing core content teachers at the middle level in Montgomery County Public Schools as fewer teachers directly hurts students, especially our most at-risk students. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. The next person signed up is Michelle Wilkins. After Ms. Wilkins is Carol Fox.
Hello, I'm Michelle Wilkins and I live in 2100 Linwood Lane in Blacksburg, and I'm a teacher at Blacksburg Middle School, parent of three. I am the first speaker in a group of very committed middle school teachers. We've prepared a response to the middle school presentations that you have been hearing, and you're welcome to follow along in your packets as we each speak, and we hope that after hearing our presentation, you will choose effectiveness alongside of efficiency. What you have to consider is a proposal to cut teachers, increase teacher caseload while reducing their planning and preparation time. We believe that this proposal does not support proven educational practices. Page two. Teaming is what is at stake when you lose teachers at a school. It is clear that running the numbers of teachers to students by whole school leads to departmentalization because it's most efficient, however, teams are what has been shown to be most effective. Page three. First, however, it is really important to define teaming. Teaming in education is not simply an organizational structure that means a group of people working on a common project. Research has shown that effective teaming at the middle school must meet these Association for Middle Level Education standards to be truly teaming. We must have high common planning time, small team size of 90 or fewer shared students per team, and regular advisory periods. Losing any more core teaching positions will make effective teaming untenable. Page four. Effective teams benefit students. Research has shown this outright. Students in schools with high levels of interdisciplinary teaming, high common planning time, small team size, and regular advisory periods score higher on academic subject tests, have lower levels of behavior problems, report lower levels of worry and higher levels of self-esteem, and we've provided the citation there for you. Page five is a slide with data on what teaming can accomplish and has accomplished in our county already, thanks to your support, but I want to turn to page six to show how the proposal to lose teachers affects teams. The middle school scheduling presentations that you've seen propose to cut 19.6 teachers and 16 will be core academic teachers. The number of students, however, is not decreasing. Mathematically, that means that each remaining core academic teacher will be responsible for more students, and this ratio is where the demise of teams begins. Page seven demonstrates how cutting core academic team teachers has already and will increase student-to-teacher caseloads beyond the American or Association for Middle Level Education standards that teams be 90 or fewer, and we've provided the data for 2011, 12, 2012, 13, and projected data for 2013 and 14.
Ms. Wilkins, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person signed up is Carol Fox. After Ms. Fox is Gus Teller.
Hi. I'm going to use the same packet, and my section begins on page eight with a simple statement of eliminating team teacher common planning time will not benefit students. Turning past, turning to page nine, this is just a little chart for you to just kind of outline what we do as team teachers, both in our individual teacher planning time as well as this core teacher planning time, which is proposed to be cut. You'll notice it's in, the core teacher planning time is a list of the responsibilities that are on top of our regular day-to-day teaching and assessing that we do. Team teachers have these responsibilities. We have planning for advisory activities. We have much team collaboration, especially near and dear to us would be the time that we meet to identify struggling and at-risk students and try to nurture them and turn that around. Interdisciplinary planning, which is best practice. We also, as you can see at the bottom of that chart, have many meetings, from IEPs to 504s to meeting with gifted and special ed teachers that work with our teams. These are the things that we do in our common planning times. We also have at our school, not only core teachers, we seem to only be speaking about core teachers, but we have non-core teachers. Non-core teachers are not assigned to a team. They can't be. In a perfect world, it would be great to have every team have a PE teacher and an art teacher, but we can't have that. So they have one planning period because they do not have these team responsibilities. Next, if you will turn to page 10, this is a graph that you have seen before. This graph, Mr. Simpkins presented on February 5th in his presentation, and it shows planning time, it doesn't, it's not really labeled if it's K to 12 or middle school or what, I'm not sure. I haven't been able to locate this graph anywhere. However, what is interesting about this graph is that the red line, on here it's black because we did black and white copies, but you'll notice in Montgomery County, the red line just juts right out. It's kind of shocking. Wow. Middle school core teachers, including team planning, 400 to 450 minutes a week. It really is shocking to see that jut out so far compared to other counties around us. However, this is not factual. This is misleading information. In order for this graph to give you a correct comparison, you would need to have the lines for other schools for middle school core teachers. Two of them that I found out about, Pulaski, 350 minutes a week, Salem Middle School, 535 minutes a week. We, with our common planning time, are not an anomaly. Next, Gus Teller will address teacher instructional time versus student instructional time.
Good evening. My name's Gus Teller. I live at 807, oh, I'm sorry. I live at 807 Village Way North in Blacksburg. I'm a teacher at Blacksburg Middle School. I have two children, one at Blacksburg Middle, the other at Blacksburg High. I'm going to be referring to pages 11 through 15 of this packet in front of you. Page 11 begins by saying, "Increasing the number of students that teachers are responsible for will not benefit students." And actually, if you flip to page 12, page 12 makes clear, more instructional time per teacher does not mean more instructional time for students. Under the current proposal that you're considering, allocated instructional time per day, per student actually remains unchanged. Teachers will have more students to care for with less time to prepare and respond to individual student needs. Increased pupil-to-teacher ratio, PTR, means fewer minutes per student to maximize engage time for each student in a responsive manner. We'll have more students, we'll have less teacher time to spend with them. Flipping over to page 13. On 13, you can see that BMS, Blackford Middle, currently meets AMLE standards, the Association for Middle Level Education. We have eight fixed periods per day. Students receive core instruction in English, Math, Science, Social Studies from their team teachers. Team sizes are about four core teachers to 100 shared students or a similar ratio in two-to-three-person teams. Advisories are taught on a daily basis at a ratio of about 1 to 26 students. We have currently adequate timing plan, or adequate planning time for individual and team planning built into our schedule as it currently is. While we're doing that team planning, students are afforded the opportunity for physical education, related arts, fine arts, and any other offerings the middle school might have. But as page 14 clearly points out, reducing core academic teachers from the middle school will increase team size beyond the AMLE standards. It will increase the core instructional teacher-student caseload. It's going to eliminate the common team planning that Ms. Fox made reference to on page nine of this packet. In some cases, it'll force students off-team for advisory classes, or it'll force advisories to increase from 26 to about 30, to as many as 36 students per advisory. Flipping over to page 15. Slide 15 illustrates the potential impact of losing core academic middle school teachers and increasing workload on remaining teachers. Lower SOL scores, fewer opportunities to build those connections with students and families that teaming allows us, increased discipline referrals, and reduced time for best practices instructions such as interdisciplinary units, inquiry-based study, critical and creative thinking. Ms. Susan Moni is going to wrap up our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Susan Moni. I live at 3013 Lancaster Drive in Blacksburg. I'm the caboose of this train, and I want to sum a few things up for you. One is that we believe that change can be positive. We're not afraid of change. We believe it can be positive when it's inclusive, when the stakeholders, including parents, teachers, students, and administrators, are all included in these conversations. We believe that change can be positive when it's based on supported best practices, when evidence documenting the need for change is presented carefully and without bias, when it is based on research literature and that literature has been consulted to ascertain that proposed changes will have a positive impact on students. We welcome changes that improve education and best serve the needs of our students. Teaming is not dependent on a specific scheduling format, but it is dependent on adequate staffing. As long as small teams with on-team advisories and adequate planning time are preserved, many styles of building-level scheduling can be responsive to student needs for instruction. However, the proposed 5-6 model does not meet these needs. Finally, we want to thank our school board and our county supervisors for their support of teaming through the staffing choices they make, through buildings that are designed to meet the specific needs of middle school students. The core philosophy of teaming has been supported by Montgomery County Schools for many, many years. We ask for your continued support and encourage you to consider the questions that we've provided in the cover letter of your packet as you evaluate the scheduling models that are going to be presented to you later this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person signed up is Kelly Pleasant. After Ms. Pleasant is Sophia Tieri.
Good evening, Chairman Jones, members of the board. Ms. Blackburn, I am Kelly Pleasant. I am president of the Montgomery County Education Association. The MCA is concerned about the impact of the possibility of losing additional instructional positions. Even though we understand the difficulty in trying to balance the 2013-14 budget, we are disappointed that the choice has come down to the potential elimination of 19 additional positions, this time across our four middle schools. We as teachers are not resistant to change when it most benefits students. We have been flexible to many changes over the last five years due to the loss of funding, teaching and staff positions, supplies, even buildings. Indeed, the greatest opportunity for any change to be successful is to involve all those most impacted in the planning and the implementation. Regretfully, this efficiency study, which recommended the scheduling change, was conducted without input from affected stakeholders such as teachers, parents, and students. The proposed changes to middle school scheduling will decrease the number of teachers in core subjects, limiting flexibility of the remaining teacher schedules. These teachers instruct critical academic labs for students who require remediation in math and reading in the courses they struggle. In addition, within the current scheduling, they are able to teach electives that provide enrichment opportunities for other students in areas such as journalism, creative writing, theater arts. Decreasing the number of core teachers per building increases the parent-pupil teacher ratio, giving teachers the responsibility of more students even as planning and conferencing time is cut to accommodate them. Shared planning time facilitates the team concept of middle school and would be cut under this plan. A team concept addresses the needs of the whole child, offering a strong support structure for youth caught in between the security of elementary school and the independence of high school. We are fortunate to have four middle schools in Montgomery County, all of which are fully accredited, with SOL scores equal to or higher than other schools in Virginia. These schools have strong administrators, highly effective teachers, and dedicated support staff. Student needs are met every day through flexible scheduling, and administrators at the individual schools have and can continue to use their professional judgment to best facilitate the existing schedules. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person signed up is Sophia Tieri. After Ms. Tieri, if I'm saying the last.
That's Ty.
Ty, I'm sorry, I was looking.
No problem.
My apologies. Sherri Blevins.
My name is Sophia Ty from 400 Fairfax Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. I'm a research assistant at Virginia Tech, Virginia Tech Center for Applied Behavior Systems, as well as for Tech's Center for Peace Studies and Violence Prevention. My research experience includes curriculum development and assessment, and the development and application of evidence-based pro-social proactive interventions in schools. Two years ago, I was introduced to Blacksburg Middle School as a researcher with an assignment to record and understand student responses to the school-wide Common Book, Three Cups of Tea Curriculum. I returned a year later to develop a middle school model of actively caring for people and evidence-based intervention to reduce bullying in schools. As a result of this work with those teachers... As a result of this work with those teachers, actively caring for people is being shared in all Montgomery County middle schools this year and in middle schools around the nation. I'm here to give a glimpse of what this experience has been like. My initial year, I found the responsibilities involved with teaching to be shocking and overwhelming. Over the next two years, I came to understand that the behind-the-scenes effort in developing that school-wide program was teams of teachers. So here's a snapshot of my experience, working closely with one team developing actively caring for people for middle schools. This team creates a neighborhood out of their hallway in that between classes you'll see them perched, you'll see teachers perched outside their doorways to soak up as much quality time with their students before the bell. At the end of their teaching load for the day, they look forward to their common planning time. This is where we would work together. When Mrs. Fox spills out tiny chocolates onto the table, this team of teachers is ready to strategize. And one of the most important things I've learned from these meetings is that when this team starts, they never start from scratch, ever. Each meeting is a continuation of an ongoing strategy to maximize on the collective strengths of the students they share, character strengths that are likely a direct result of these team meetings. How do I know? Because there was never a meeting where a student or a few students didn't walk through the open door of Ms. Fox's classroom just as they hired to tell their team teachers a story. These students just stroll in to enjoy the company of their core teachers because they're that certain about the quality and genuineness of relationships in that room, student to teacher, teachers to teachers. The students shared by this team are saturated in a community of supportive relationships, and it is these quality relationships between teachers and between teachers and students that form the foundation to self-motivated achievement and peer-to-peer empowerment. The belief that the addition of social and emotional learning would take away from the essentials of education is a dangerous misconception because their purpose is to better facilitate the learning process for the school as a whole. I urge you to consider the impact proposed cuts of 20 middle school positions would have on these safe havens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up is Sherry Blevins. After Ms. Blevins is Tracy Pugh.
Good evening. Sherry Blevins. I live at 240 Virginian Drive, Christiansburg. I have a fifth-grade daughter at Falling Branch Elementary School. I'm here to address the urgent threat and safety concern of our children, teachers, and staff at Falling Branch Elementary School in regard to the park-and-ride that is less than 50 feet away from our school and accommodates thousands of patrons a month. On February 7th, I was informed by the staff of the incident that occurred earlier that week. The incident where a man carrying a backpack entered the school asking, requesting to use the restroom. He was denied and asked to leave the property. He then returned, snuck back in the door, went to the restroom, and then was confronted by administrators while, until police arrived. I was upset to hear this, but then to further learn that this had been an ongoing battle with staff and the park-and-ride patrons, and that they had complained and no one had been taking them seriously, I was in disbelief. I was asked and encouraged to help, and since then I have been very proactive. There have been 50 documented incidents in the school within the last three years. Twenty times, including this past Friday afternoon, Christiansburg Police Department have been called to assist where people refuse to leave or become belligerent. According to our principal, two to five incidents such as these occur every month at that school. This is unacceptable. We are very thankful that no one has been hurt, but we cannot afford to ignore the warning signs and wait until someone is hurt. We must act now. Chief Sisson has publicly stated that this is a safety issue, and we are grateful that for the immediate action and leadership the town of Christiansburg has shown by providing a resource officer for the next three weeks until other safeguards can be implemented. We ask the school board to act. Secure the building and cottages. Limit the access to the front door. We can't control who comes off the park-and-ride and when, but we can limit the access by some type of electrical devices. Secure the cottages. Anyone can walk straight across from that park-and-ride to our mobile units. They are not protected. We need to figure out a way to protect them. Continue to have a full-time resource officer with two to five incidents a month occurring at the school, and 20 times in the past that Christiansburg has responded, it is evident that we need security on that premises. Advocate officially, we ask the school board to officially and firmly support the relocation of that park-and-ride. I know that you don't have control over the park-and-ride, and that is a VDOT property, but we can, together, strongly support that to be relocated. Everyone shares in this responsibility to keep our children safe. Meet, please meet with VDOT, town, county, and state leaders who have the authority to make these things possible. It is our sincere hope that all leaders will work diligently together to keep our children safe. Safety is our priority. We just saw all these kids win awards. That is our future. If we can't keep them safe, that trumps everything else. Safety should be a priority for everyone in this room, for our children, and we're hope, our sincere hopes that we all can work together with all leaderships to resolve this, but immediately, we need to implement some safeguards at that school to access, limit the access, since we can't control the number of people, thousands of people, at that bus stop 50 feet from the school. We need to limit the access to that front door. We need to keep the doors locked, and we need to figure out a way that we can close the cottages so somebody can't just walk right across that property line and have access to our children. Thank you.
Next person signed up is Tracy Pugh. After Ms. Pugh is Laura Blackburn.
I'm Tracy Hurst. I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak. I live at 2340 Glade Drive in Christiansburg. I have two children at Falling Branch. I'm also the vice president of the PTA, very involved in the school. And with this situation with the park-and-ride that Sherry described, extremely concerned about our children and about their safety, I want to say that I'm very grateful for the support we've received from the town council, the police department, many public officials that I have received emails from, and I'm very grateful for you guys for hearing us out and hopefully to have your support. Nothing is more important than the safety of our children, and I think everybody can agree with that. And I feel like we should be eliminating any unnecessary contact from strange adults that can come into our school and interact with our children. I mean, that just, you know, it makes common sense to limit that interaction. And really, the only way to do that, other than some, some of the things that Sherry had mentioned, providing some security and some safety in the school, is hopefully to find eventually a way to move the park-and-ride. Some of these incidents have occurred within school hours, but what I think a lot of people are not understanding is that almost all these incidents have occurred at a time when there are children in the school. We have children in the school for after-school activities, and then we have adventure club, sometimes not till 6 o'clock in the evening. There's still children that are in the school. So there really has been many times, and most of the times when this has happened, that there would have been some children there that could have been in a situation we would never want to see them in. And I know that we don't want to wait for something bad to happen, and then to look at those that we had asked for help, who didn't support us, who are then going to say, "Why didn't we take this opportunity to make a change and to do everything we can to protect our children?" So I'm just hoping that I can appeal to you guys, as well as anyone that you can reach out to who can possibly help us find a way to make our children safe, because I know that's what we all want. And I want to thank you all very much for your support in this issue.
Thank you. Board members, we've hit the 30-minute limit on the public address, and at this time, we have four more people signed up. I would encourage that we extend public address for another 15 minutes.
I make a motion that we extend public address to the final speaker.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All's in favor, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Public address is now extended. Next person on the agenda is Laura Blackburn. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. The next person after that is Joey Lyons.
Thank you. I'm Joey Lyons. I live at 415 Howery Street in Christiansburg. I have a first-grade daughter who attends Falling Branch Elementary, and really, what I want to express is to reiterate the things that have been said already. I understand that we could all get very emotional about this situation based upon events that have happened in the past couple of months throughout our country, but I do want to express both a, a very strong concern for the situation, but I understand that we have to be very practical in it as well. I do think just the common, just the easy fixes are, are without question need to be done. Locking doors, perhaps installing cameras, those types of things just need to be done. And I also would like to just say, I do, I am very thankful and for the support we've received so far from the town council, and I am very appreciative of the principal, who I think has been very open and honest with everything. I guess my one concern and the thing that kind of, I'm not really getting a full explanation on is if this has been happening, has been a concern for apparently several years, why has it not been addressed before? And I would ask the council, the school board, to really just hear what parents are saying, take it to heart, really consider doing anything and everything that we can to keep our children safe. I also think that while we are all in this together for a safety, a, to wait, raise awareness to the safety issue at hand, you know, every time I look at my little six-year-old daughter walking into school, I'm entrusting her and entrusting her safety, and I want to know that I, my trust is really taken seriously. I purposely, every morning when I drop her off at school, watch her until she gets into the door, and please hear me, if anything were to ever happen to my, to my daughter, I don't know what I would do. And again, not emotional, but there is emotion associated with this. Let's be practical. Let's be purposeful, and let's act as quickly and as efficiently as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up is Angie Whirl.
Good evening. I'm Angie Whirl. I live at 155 Pine Hollow Road, Christiansburg, Virginia. I actually emailed everyone last week, so what I have to say is just a brief summary, similar to what I sent then, and I appreciate the responses I got from that email. But basically, I have a son that's a fourth grader at Falling Branch Elementary School, and I also have a seventh grader at Christiansburg Middle School. But my concerns are involving the park-and-ride and the safety of everyone at the school. To me, it saddens me when I have to have a conversation with my child, basically, you know, discussing with him what he's going to do if he sees a stranger in the building, and trying to get him to understand the importance of that, because he's nine. So, and then while I'm having the conversation with him, I learned that he'd seen police officers at the school, which I wasn't even aware that they'd been called. So all of this information was new to me, and I would have also liked to have known in advance, considering it's been happening for a while. And I remember before the, you know, the park-and-ride put the shelter there, you know, that people were trying to come in then, I thought it'd been taken care of. I didn't realize it was still continuing. So my whole thing is, you know, when a child has to worry about who they're going to see in the hallways, who they're going to see on the playground, are they supposed to be there? Do they have a visitor pass? Do they have a volunteer pass? So I just want to make sure that he's able to concentrate on his schoolwork and everyone in the building, you know, that's their main concern, is getting the education. They're young. They want to play. They want to have fun while they're learning. So, and then the fact that someone could approach them on the playground is a little disturbing, too. But in addition to the unwelcome visitors, the park-and-ride has also outgrown its space. So when you're coming to drop your child off, you are coming with cars along the way, they're facing ongoing traffic, you have traffic leaving. So it's really outgrown its spot there, and I don't even really realize why it was ever put there. But anyway, and also, sorry, I lost track of thought. You know, the park-and-ride's going to continue to grow. It's a great service. It just needs a different location. And to prevent future incidents, that would be great, if we could all work together to get it moved. And in addition to that concern, you know, I think the school, you know, the schools need to be locked, not just Falling Branch, but Christiansburg Middle School and all the other schools. It's too easy for anyone to access them. And I know, you know, with incidents that have happened in the past, that yes, school was locked, but it slows down the evil that's coming in. So it's, you know, you-
Mr. Whirl, your time is up.
Sorry. Thank you.
That's okay. Thank you. The next person signed up is Tom Ewing.
Thank you. My name is Tom Ewing. I live at 1400 Valleyview Drive in Blacksburg, Virginia. I want to speak in support of continuing the current schedule that allows Blacksburg Middle School teachers to maintain their collaborative planning. This approach has proven its value and should be continued. As the parent of a child who attended Blacksburg Middle School at the Prices Fork location, I came to appreciate the value of a team-based approach to providing high-quality instruction in a supportive environment. As a faculty member of Virginia Tech, I was involved in a professional development program, the US Department of Education Teaching American History grants, which brought about $1 million of professional development funds into this county. During that seven years I was involved in this project, I was consistently impressed by the dedication of the Blacksburg Middle School teachers to finding innovative and effective ways to instruct children in sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade classes. It was obvious from their engagement and excitement that the team-based approach reinforced their interest in finding new ways to teach materials. Several years ago, I attained a grant from the Virginia Foundation for the Humanities to develop curriculum materials based on the Christiansburg Institute, and when I had that opportunity, I designed the project around working with middle school teachers from Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Auburn, and Shawtsville, because I knew that they were interested in finding innovative approaches to teaching. As an educator, I strongly encourage you to maintain a strategy that has proven its success. Maintaining and strengthening the team-based approach to middle school teaching is the best possible preparation of children for the challenges of high school. I feel lucky to have had the chance to work with these teachers. My daughter was extremely lucky to have these teachers when she was in middle school. You are lucky to have these teachers. I hope you will listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all that have signed up at this time. If there's anyone else that would like to address the board at this time, please step forward and state your name and address. His motion was for the last-
I'm sorry, but the motion was only to extend public address to the speaker who signed up.
No, to the last speaker.
He said to the last speaker.
Right.
My name is Barbara Skinner, and I live at 3583 Laurel Drive in Blacksburg, and I would like to thank Superintendent Blackburn for preparing the middle school scheduling study, which looks at inputs, instructional and planning time, and output academic achievement. Too often, we present quality as a measure of inputs rather than what really counts output, that is how well our children are learning. I would also like to thank board member Sarah Woolsey for her call to action on this issue. Efficiency shouldn't be addressed only during the turbulence of budgeting, but throughout the year. I hope the board will vote tonight to implement Superintendent Blackburn's new model for middle school scheduling. We've got to spend our money on what works. Looking at the math scores for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, we see pass rates in Montgomery County of 75%, 56%, and 38% respectively. I believe that Ms. Blackburn has mentioned differentiated learning as key to improvement in math. I think especially in math, this could be best accomplished through computer modules, through which students can work at their own pace. A number of schools, including public schools, are already using Khan Academy exercise modules to enable learning differentiation. Again, I hope you'll support Superintendent Blackburn tonight concerning middle school scheduling, as well as future efficiencies, and where necessary, the charting of new ideas and directions. Thank you.
If you would, please step forward and state your name and address.
My name is Patricia Calatostia. I live at 1580 Taylor Hollow Road in Blacksburg, and I would like to address the proposed middle school schedule changes, and I'm going to read to you directly from the Regulations Establishing Standards for Accrediting Public Schools in Virginia. And the paragraph that refers to middle school classroom teachers states, it's only two sentences long, it says, "The middle school classroom teacher standard load shall be based on teaching no more than 5/6 of the instructional day, with no more than 150 students-" student periods per day or thirty class periods per week." Sentence number two. "Beginning with the academic year 2008 to 2009, a middle school classroom teacher standard load shall be based on teaching no more than five-sixths of the instructional day, with no more than one hundred and fifty student periods per day or twenty-five class periods per week." The second sentence obviously refers to today, it's past 2008, 2009. The only other difference between the two sentences is that the second one, the one that refers to today, limits middle school teachers to teaching twenty-five class periods per week. Since there's only one difference between the two sentences, doesn't that suggest that the intent of the change is to limit middle school teachers to twenty-five class periods per week or five per day? I don't understand why we're even having this conversation about five-sixths of a day, fractions, percentages of the school day, or minutes of the school day teaching, when the intent of the change is obvious to limit middle school teachers to twenty-five class periods per day? If you need efficiencies in the middle school schedule, you need to give the schedule to the middle school teachers and the middle school principals, and have them come up with the changes. They're the experts in middle school education. I don't teach middle school. I teach at Blacksburg High School. I depend on them to send me prepared students, which they do very well. They do a great job with them. They're the experts in changing this. We need to work within the entire wording of the regulations, not the first part of a sentence that doesn't even apply anymore, and let the middle school teachers give you the efficiencies you're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board at this time? If so, please step forward and state your name and address.
My name is Dr. John Craggett, I'm from Roanoke, Virginia. I finished Christa Bird Industrial Institute off of Franklin Road over here, Franklin Street and Scattagood Drive. One of the meetings I attended up here a few days ago, they was met about the music choirs and directors, bands and all that, that was met, somebody might be taking it out, eliminated from the school system. I hope that it's not true, that that is, music is a universal language, and that should never be taken out the school system. Because when I was going to school up here, the bands was excited, because we got to go participate in parades in Blacksburg, Rabbit, Christa Bird, and everybody was excited. It's a teacher in Roanoke, he's from Blacksburg, named Mr. Johnson, and he said he used to sit and wait for the bands to come through and march through the town of Blacksburg. And he said, well, I'm not bragging, but they said, "Christa Bird Institute, we had the best band. Everywhere we went, we won first prize." Because we were taught to be disciplined, and we practiced, we took our instrument home. If you didn't have, if you couldn't purchase the instrument, they rent, you could rent one, and you had to take it home and you had to practice at home. So if that's a part of it, if it's not, please put it on the agenda that do not eliminate music from the Montgomery High School. And I attended Montgomery, I mean, I didn't attend Montgomery, East Montgomery, but I was from Elliston, but we have the elementary school in Elliston, I had the Walter School, but then I had to come to Christa Bird Institute. We came to Christa Bird Institute, another thing about music, we came to Christa Bird Institute, I left, got on the bus at 6:45. We got at Christa Bird Institute at 8:45, and we had prayer, scripture, sing, and pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board at this time? Please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, public address now closed. Next item on our agenda is the consent items. I need a move, an approval, I'm sorry, an approval for consent items. Does anybody wanna pull anything related to consent and discuss?
I don't wanna pull anything, I'd like to read what you have here. At the request of an anonymous donor, the Montgomery County Educational Foundation wishes to donate ten thousand dollars per year for the next ten years, based upon the school division's continued funding of twenty slots to attend Southwest Virginia's Governor's School. And I think that's, should be noted.
Okay.
And I certainly would like to thank Rachel and Mike Robinson for donating two thousand dollars to Prices Fork Elementary School to purchase iPads for kindergarten classes. I really appreciate that, Mr. and Mrs. Robinson.
Any other comments? Okay, items approved on consent. The next item is on the agenda is the personnel report. I need a motion to approve the personnel report.
So move.
Any discussion on the personnel report? All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is payment of the bills. Need a motion to pay the bills.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on the bills? All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills have been paid. Need a motion to approve the financial summary report.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements. Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Tonight, we're gonna have a special presentation on self-funded health insurance. This topic originally came up during our November joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors. The discussion that took place led to my providing you with some additional written information about self-insurance plans, and to my request that our insurance provider make a presentation to the board on self-insurance plans. The Board of Supervisors also had a presentation from an insurance provider on this topic, and they followed up with a presentation from a county, Roanoke County, and their school system, Roanoke County Public Schools, who have been involved in a self-insurance plan for some time. Tonight, I'm pleased that we have representatives from our insurance consultant company, McNairy, who will provide us with some additional information about self-insurance. I'm gonna ask Mr. Shannon if he would introduce our speakers for this evening.
We have with us tonight from McNairy Insurance Consulting, David Leonard and Keith Sharp. David has been with us for at least ten years during our health insurance consulting. And McNairy has been consulting for the school system on health insurance, and also does our liability insurance for at least fifteen years. And so they'll do a presentation on self-insurance, mainly to provide additional information. And I'll ask them to introduce themselves, give you a little more detail as they go through the presentation. If it's not working on the screens, I believe you have the copy of the presentation on your iPads there that you could follow along with it.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. I'm not gonna use the laptop since, would it mess up them if I don't use the laptop? Okay. I'll just talk for my hard copy.
I wouldn't encourage you to speak-
I'm sorry, I have a tendency to wander.
For the benefit of the audience.
Thank you.
Some of us up here as well.
Like Mr. Shannon said, I've been involved over ten years here with the county school system, and really enjoyed my opportunity to work with you over the years. Got forty-three years in employee benefits, and what we wanna mention tonight is, talk a little bit about how self-funding goes about compared to fully insured, which you have now. Let me very upfront say, we're not talking about changing the level of benefits, the co-pays, the deductibles, or anything like that. It's a matter of how you fund the benefits. Under self-current method, you currently have a fully insured contract, which means you pay premiums each month to Anthem, based upon the number of people you have covered each month. That premium goes into their pocket, they pay the claims out, they take their expenses and everything from that. Anything left over, they keep. Anything above the premium, they come back next year and want more money. So they win most years so far. So under, if you turn to the first page, self-funded approach, the employer assumes all or portion of the risk for the health benefits. In other words, you no longer have it, let me add one thing, if you have questions, just hold them after, we'll answer them then. You assume the risk for the health benefits, you no longer have an insurance company which you pass it off to, like Anthem. There's a number of administrative options available, I'm not gonna hit all of them because some of them are not used too much anymore. An administrative services only contract would be like with Anthem, you would pay them to pay the claims on a monthly basis, and it'd continue the same process. Employees would see no difference in the way benefits are paid, no matter how you fund the benefits. Use a third-party administrator, they mentioned self-administrator here, I don't recommend that, it gets in too big a problem. Fixed costs to pay the claims, and it used to be a variable basis on which you paid based upon the dollarworth of claims. That's gone by the wayside, I don't recommend that. Third page, self-funded terms, administrative fee, that's the charge, anyone would charge you to pay the claims, handle the billing, eligibility, customer service, planned documents, maintenance, access fees, and managed care fees, anything it costs to run the plan, just like Anthem's doing for you now. It might be a setup fee, to get everything up and running for the first time, prepare booklets and all that for the employees. They'd come up with a level of expected claims. This is how an underwriter would come up with what they would expect your claims to be in the next planned year. So that's done actuarially, based upon the past claims experience, they look at what you've had in the most recent period, and some inflation trend factors to that, and come up with the expected claims. Some self-funded terms on the next page, specific stop-loss, that essentially is a insurance you buy to protect the plan from a catastrophic claim on one individual. You'd have, each individual would have its own deductible for that, and after you hit the deductible, then they would pay all the claims from that point forward. That protects you from your liability on a jumbo claim. And you've run probably three to four claims a year, I think, over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's right now where the point is. Anything above a hundred and fifty thousand, the insurance company takes on their risk completely, you have no liability for that. Generally, there's a maximum set on the amount of claims for the year. It's set at usually a hundred and twenty-five percent of expected claims. I know Anthem will do a hundred and fifteen percent of expected claims. The lower you go on percentage, the more expensive it costs. So you have to set your own risk tolerance for those type items, and that's how we help employers do that. There's an aggregate stop-loss, which means on the total claims for the year, that amount is set based upon aggregate stop-loss. You have a liability limit, no matter what happens for the plan year, and that's spelled out in the contract. And some companies will allow you to have a monthly accommodation, where if the claims go over a certain amount in any one month, they will step in and pick up those claims after that point. So that protects you even more about spikes from one month to the other. Because we all know, unfortunately, insurance claims don't come in all one-twelfth each month. So you're gonna have good, high months, low months, but on average, it works out about what it would be for any planned year. So I'm gonna turn to my associate, Keith Sharp, Keith is senior benefits consultant with McNairy.
Thank you, David. I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail on how stop-loss works within the contract. As David mentioned to you, with a self-funded contract, you're basically paying an administrator to pay your claims on a monthly basis, and you're gonna have spikes up and down. You wanna have protection for that, and that's where you purchase stop-loss insurance. The first type of stop-loss insurance is specific or individual, and this will protect you from a large individual unexpected claim, like a premature baby, a tragic car accident, a transplant. And basically, you will pay up to the deductible amount, and then anything over that will be paid by the insurance company. So this is called catastrophic or specific stop-loss. Again, this gives you protection against the unexpected claims, and where this is under a fully insured arrangement like you're being under right now, all claims are the responsibility of the insurance carrier, they assume all liability. Under a self-funded plan, you as the plan administrator assume all that liability, but you're transferring that portion of a catastrophic claim to the carrier. You're basically breaking out the components on a la carte basis. Aggregate stop-loss, that protects the entire plan. You know, you look at the entire budget of what your health insurance program is, and this will, would protect you above a certain level based off aggregate claims for everybody that's in the plan. Just to give you an example, if you had a budget of ten million dollars, you would be protected by aggregate if claims exceeded a certain level above that. So the combination of a specific and aggregate stop-loss will give you protection, and can hopefully benefit you from a cash flow standpoint. To give you an example of how a specific claim would occur, and this is a lower deductible than what you would have, but just for purposes of this presentation, let's say your deductible for specific stop-loss is twenty-five thousand dollars, and you had a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar claim. The first twenty-five thousand would be your responsibility, then the additional hundred and two thousand would be transferred to the insurance carrier. Just to give you some overall advantages and disadvantages to a self-funded plan versus a fully insured plan, you have flexibility in terms of plan design under a self-funded plan that you don't have with fully insured. You still have to comply with federal guidelines, ERISA guidelines regardless, but if you have a self-funded plan, you don't have to comply with certain state mandates and filings that you do under a fully insured plan. So it gives you more flexibility to design a plan that may be more appropriate for your employees. And this could be positive and negative benefit impacts. The employer can choose the amount of risk that you wanna retain, so you can pick your deductible level. For instance, on specific stop-loss, if you wanted a, you know, currently you're at a hundred and fifty thousand underneath your fully insured plan, if you wanted a higher or lower amount to reduce your fixed cost and assume more risk, you could do that. With aggregate insurance, you could choose to purchase it or not to purchase it. Many companies or entities your size choose not to purchase aggregate insurance, because it usually kicks in at a level of a hundred and twenty-five percent of expected claims. And your claims are pretty credible, and they've run pretty steady over the past four or five years. And I think probably the protection of specific stop-loss would be sufficient. I guess the other big advantage with a self-funded plan is the reduction of your fixed cost. You do not have to pay as much state premium taxes under self-funded, because the claims, which is seventy-five percent of the premium that you're paying in, under a fully insured plan, you're paying taxes on all that amount. If you break it out on an a la carte basis, and you just pay for the administrative fee, then all that claim component, taxes are not applicable, and it can be, you know, two percent of that number. Also, you don't have margin or profit or margin that the insurance carrier will typically put in to a fully insured plan. It's called, it's an additional risk charge that they have. So basically, you could look at your fixed cost, if you take the claim component of the fully insured plan, and you're looking just at the fixed cost portion, you're gonna reduce it about a little over six percent by being on a self-funded basis, because you're taking out margin on the tax, margin and taxes on the premium. You know, gives you, I guess, the big, the other thing in addition to your fixed cost reduction, gives you cash flow advantages. You take advantage of good positive claims experience as it happens, and you have the protection there to prevent you against unexpected or large catastrophic experiences. Disadvantage is the risk assumption that you're going, that you're going to have to take. With a fully insured premium, you're paying a monthly premium. All the risk is then transferred to the insurance carrier. Under a self-funded plan, you have the risk of the up and down of the claims flow, which of course can be mitigated by the specific stop-loss that we discussed earlier. The other, I guess, additional responsibility will be fiduciary responsibility- The other, I guess, additional responsibility will be fiduciary responsibility. If the plan is ever sued currently, it is now the fiduciary responsibility of the insurance carrier. So in other words, they'll go to court and fight on your behalf. If there is a claim against the plan under a self-funded basis, you're the fiduciary. And you'll, you would have to provide legal representation for that. That's basically an overview. Any, any questions that you have on, on the components? I know it can be a little bit complicated.
Board members, questions?
I have a, on page 10. Employer pays the deductible amount of $25,000. What are we paying now?
Well, if, you, you don't have it broken out because you have an internal pooling, but $150,000 is what Anthem uses as your internal pooling amount.
Okay, thank you.
Pooling and, the pooling and stop-loss are the same thing. They just, you're not charged beyond $150,000 on an individual claim.
Okay, thank you. But then you indicated also that we really shouldn't pay much attention to that? Didn't you say that?
Shouldn't pay much attention to.
To this particular page 10? Or was I, am I wrong?
I think he was meaning the aggregate stop-loss. When you get to a certain threshold, size, number of employees, and claims level, the chances of you fluctuating 25% from one year to another. A lot of people just buy it because it's sleep insurance. In other words, we're never going to hit it, but in case we do, we've got protection. It's relatively inexpensive, but once you get to a certain threshold, like right now, your claims are running $7 million plus a year. If that's the expected claims, they're going to tack on 15 or 25% on top of that before they, they'll kick in. So the chances of it fluctuating $250,000, $2,500,000 in a year or something like that's pretty slim.
Very, very few entities your size purchase aggregate stop-loss insurance because of the predictability of claims.
That's what you said, okay, thank you.
Board members, any other board members with questions?
So you said the catastrophic? The catastrophic coverage? That that was an a la carte item that the employee could choose to?
No, ma'am, that, it is an a la carte coverage, but it's something you as a plan administrator would decide if you wanted to purchase or not. Again, this is strictly a funding method and has no impact on the benefit design for the employees or the choices that they would make. It was just how you would choose to fund, to fund that, your benefit program.
And one other point, you'd have more flexibility in picking that point than you do today. Anthem says, based upon your size, your premium, your number of employees, here's where it's got to be. They, they will not negotiate to raise it or lower it. And you know, the higher you go, the less premium they keep out of that for paying, covering that claim. So you have more flexibility when it comes to that.
One other thing, I'm, I'm, I'm going through this, I went through this obviously two days ago, listening to you and I'm going through it again as you're speaking. And I know there's more questions, but I can't formulate them right now. Is there a way I can?
If you'll provide us with questions, we'll funnel them back through.
Give it to Shannon and he'll get them to us and we'll respond and write. We know it's a very quick presentation. We want to give you a high-level overview of what we're talking about.
What would you say are the negatives of a self-funded plan?
Well, I, I would say the, the negative to you would be you're going to be obtaining more risk.
We're going to accept more risk?
You're going to accept more risk, no matter what. And there's the fiduciary portion that we talked about. But for the most part, your assets would be exposed. So I feel like that, you know, most entities your size are, you know, are self-funded.
Are what?
Are self-funded. And so because of the predictability of claims at your size. And so I, you know, I would say a smaller employer, you see more vulnerability or volatility in claims levels. But in a, at an entity your size, it's more stable. But if you had to say the biggest negative, that would be it. That you'd be, you'd be taking on more potential risk.
Right. And are there other school districts in our broader area, say, you know, 150, 200 mile radius?
We deal with Suffolk School System, Chesapeake Systems, and they're both self-funded. And the Suffolk School System has a plan, plans and benefits about what you have, the two benefits, the HMO and the PPO. So they're self-funded. They're a little bit larger than your school's district, of course.
I was wondering, anybody in our?
Rono County also.
Rono County.
So, do you fund, besides school system, do you fund county employees?
We worked with counties, private industry and all.
And are we looking at the possibility of the county as well?
Yes, that was the conversation that precipitated this presentation. The supervisors asked specifically if the board, the school board would have an interest in pursuing a self-funded plan for both employee groups.
And the risk would still be there regardless, even if the two entities got together? But the risk wouldn't be quite as large, I'm assuming?
These are more people than two entities. And it could be priced according to the claims on each entity. In other words, if the county had worse claims experience per employee on the average, their rates could be set higher. If yours are lower, it could be set appropriately.
The, the biggest component to minimizing risk is purchasing stop-loss deductible at the appropriate level for you. And once that's done, you've really minimized your risk.
Yeah, thank you.
In other words, we would just pay the deductible amount of the $25,000?
No, it'd be, it'd be higher than that for you. I mean, right now, it's $150,000.
$150,000.
This is, this is the county would pay the claims up to that level, not an individual. The county would assume a risk. It can be set at different levels, depends on the threshold. We look at a couple of things, how many claims you've had over the past years and what level? What's the premium for, say, $150,000 deductible, $125,000, $175,000? And then see where you would have benefited and based on past history. That way, we, we kind of do a look back. We can't say what's going to happen next year, of course. We can look back at what's happened over the last three or four years and do a projection based, if it happened like that today, here's where, which would be the best level.
And those premiums would be paid by?
They would be paid, just like you pay a fully insured premium right now, you would pay the premium for the stop-loss. Yes, ma'am, you would. That would be incorporated in your total rate. The lower the deductible is, the higher the premium is going to be. And vice versa, yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions. First, you mentioned that the county and the, and the school system is considering this as a joint effort. Do you have other localities in which that has occurred?
We don't personally here. Virginia's a little different. We, we're from North Carolina. We, we've worked up here a long time, understand the difference. North Carolina, of course, there's no school systems, they're all state benefits. I mean, you'll buy it locally. There's a number of, I know, counties and school systems that have merged into Virginia, but we don't work with them though.
Yeah, I can tell you this, we, we've had a lot of experience with corporate clients where there've been acquisitions and mergers where they've come into a common plan and operated independently. So yes, there's, it can be easily done.
We talked about the advantages and disadvantages mainly from our side of the fence, but what about the employee's side of the fence? Do they see, is it any difference? Are they going to go to the doctor and they're going to say, uh-oh, you're now part of this, you're self-funded, it's now an extra $10 or it's an extra 25?
See, you'd prob, let's say you don't change from Anthem as the administrator. They'll have a card that says Anthem on it, administered by Anthem. And the plan will be the same. The discounts will be the same, the co-pays will be the same, the deductibles will be the same, and the percentage of claims that are paid will be the same. Employees will, would not see one difference in the level of service or the level of benefits. That's why I want to assure you. It's only a matter of how you pay for those benefits through a different funding arrangement.
Yeah, they would have to be notified in their summary plan description that it's a self-funded plan. But other than that, practically, they're, they're not going to see any difference.
Does this include the drugs, the pharmaceutical as well?
Yes, sir, it does.
Drug plan is part of this as well?
Right.
All right.
So if we chose to have a higher deductible, would that increase the cost to our employees?
Which deductible are you referring to, the specific stop-loss?
Well, basically, yeah. Basically, when we set forth the parameters of the plan, I guess you look at it two different ways. One, you look at the cost that's going to be associated to the employees and the benefit design that they're going to have. For instance, their co-pays, their deductible, their drug card. Under a self-funded plan, fully insured, it's invisible to them. It's just how you go about calculating the total cost to the plan. I feel like it would, you know, be very possible under a self-funded arrangement, you could reduce the overall cost of the plan, which you could be, could then be passed on to the employees. Most entities look at a self-funded plan in terms of its success over a five-year period because you're going to have some ups and downs. But if you look over that, I feel like there's definitely potential savings for you or if you look retrospectively in the past in terms of how you've performed. I think there, there's, you know, potential to be looked at and merit to look at that, that way of funding.
Have you had organizations that have went to the stop, to the self-funded, I'm sorry, and decided that just wasn't them and moved back? Or it, once you, once you go self-funded, you stay self-funded? I mean, is it?
Well, well, here is a critical thing you need to look at. If you go self-funded, one of the things that comes into place is now you're going to be responsible for funding your own reserves. And what reserves are is for claims that have been incurred but haven't been paid yet and could typically be done at the end of the planned year. So let's say that you were self-funded and you decided to go to a fully insured basis. You would still have claims that had been incurred under the prior year that hadn't been paid yet and you would need to be able to fund that and take care of it. We would advise you on what you need to have in that reserve fund. Okay, so one thing that may prevent a company from going back to fully insured is they haven't properly maintained that reserve fund. The other potential situation could be the, just the financial viability, you know, of the particular entity. But, you know, so there is a potential risk with that.
We've seen some private sector businesses that jumped into self-funding because somebody stole them a bill of goods because they're having bad claims, they're having bad cash flow. And they say, oh, this would be your salvation. Well, it's not a salvation if you've got those problems. If your claims are bad, you have bad cash flow, you should never go into a self-funded arrangement because that's the worst thing you can do. Those may try to go back, but it's hard to go back there. But they are, if you've got the reserves, you can go back, no problem.
Any other final questions, board members?
Is it, is it possible for us to see a comparison of our plan now and a self-insured plan that's comparable to what we have? So that I can compare them?
What, what would happen? The plan could stay the same. There would be no change in benefits to the employee. This is strictly how you fund and how you assume the risk. Right now, we pay Anthem over $9 million a year for premiums. If your claims that you pay out are less than $9 million a year and their expenses are less than $9 million a year, Anthem keeps it. When you go under self-funded, then you're not paying them their profit. If you have a good claims year and the benefits doesn't change, you retain those funds. And that's how you build up a reserve account. And you use that reserve account then to balance your thing to offset future premiums and to balance the account. And all your stop losses and aggregate losses are, they're just extra insurance that you buy. And the level that you set that at determines how much you have to pay for that insurance, which determines how much your expense is, which then, when you break it down by employees, is how much your premiums are. You still pay premiums. Board can still pay 100% of the single premium or you could, could change that. None of that changes. What changes is the relationship we have with Anthem. Yes, instead of them being fully assuming the risk, you as a board take on that financial risk for managing the plan and to get that, you gain some flexibility. The reason the county's talking about it and the reason we're looking at it is we're paying a lot of money for health insurance. And Anthem is making some good money off of this for it. And in these times, they're looking at it. But you could not go into self-insurance on her own because you do not have full control over your funding and revenue sources. We actually would need the support of the county because they carry the reserves. We're only in annual appropriation. They have the reserves, they have the taxing authority, they have the revenue raising authority with it. And so you have to, does the county have to be in there for the school system to do it? No. But it would work well together if the county and the school system are kind of working on the same plan because it creates a bigger group and there's possibly some advantages to that. But you'll need their support because your payout of claims run over 18-months period, you're on an annual appropriation, and we do not have any reserve. If we had a problem, you've got to go to the board of supervisors to bet us out on it. And so if you were going to look at it, it's, it's, it's an efficiency move. It says that if you can manage your health insurance and hire the right people to do it and everything, and those that have been doing it have saved money. If you've read the paper, you heard where Rono County, their reserves build up to a certain point, they use part of their reserves to give salary increase to their employees because it exceeded what they, what they needed to, to fund their plan. But you do have to plan it because there can be some bad years also.
So what would happen? We went in together and did this and then it became a bad experience for either one of the entities? And they decided to back out? How does that work?
Well, you would want, when you commit to going into doing this, you would want to do it, as, as they've said, at minimum of five years. You would not make a change within the first year. Statistics and all the studies have shown that at least one year out of five years, most, most employers are going to have, you know, a bad year on their claims.
Okay, so it's six years. Somebody says, I don't want to do this anymore. How does that impact it?
You, you have to have the funds then to go under fully insured, paid 12 months' worth of fully insured premiums, plus pay your balance or your unpaid claims on your self-insured arrangement. So the first year, it becomes expensive when you do that.
So you basically just start over again by yourself?
Yes, yes.
So an employee has to have hip replacement?
Yes. Be covered under the plan, be no different than it's currently covered.
Totally under the plan.
Correct.
Just like today, it's totally uncovered.
Be the same coverage that you have now for hip replacement. If that hip replacement and you set a stop-loss at $150,000 and that hip replacement costs $250,000, then our premiums would be based on the cost for that $150,000 claim plus the additional expense to buy the stop-loss insurance for the amount over $150,000. So they, you still pay premiums. You still accumulate the money to pay the, pay the claims. And you buy that stop-loss insurance, which is part of the expense that you pay for, pay for the insurance. But it limits, all it is is a way to limit your, your risk and exposure. And I think what we need to do at this point, we're going to be coming back with additional information and some comparison for the next step and then we can send questions to the superintendent.
Yes, I would appreciate any questions that you have. If you'd funnel them to me, we'll get answers so that we know exactly what the next step would be. The one thing that we didn't talk about is that, you know, implementing a self-funded plan is something that you would probably look at as being 18 months, 12 to 18 months to do that. Would you, would you agree, David, Keith? Take a time period, I mean, you would not be implementing that plan for school year 13, 14?
That, that would be, that would be your call.
So you would be probably, in terms of the conversations we've had, you're looking at another school year out before you would be ready to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Our next three items are related to facilities and capital projects. And we're going to start with our capital projects report. And this evening, Bob Kayler got this short straw and he's going to be presenting the information this evening in Curtis' absence. So, welcome, Bob.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Jones, board members, Superintendent Blackburn.
Good evening, Chairman Jones, board members, Superintendent Blackburn. I wish you wouldn't call it a short straw, it's always exciting to be here.
We're always glad to have you, but you know.
Working their way towards the center. And, um, that area, you know, we'll start with the, uh, drywall fairly soon. I was there this weekend, and, um, you know, they were washing the, uh, brick pillars there and so forth, so, um, it's coming along quite nicely.
So, on, the picture on the left, that's the second floor?
Yes.
And those are classrooms?
Uh, no, that, that's the center atrium type area, a general common area. And the classrooms are off on the wings to the side, down the corridor.
Oh.
So, you can see it's kind of a, a very large, open area, common area in there. Um, the next, the next photo on the right is the, uh, main gymnasium. And, um, you get a photo of what's called the light monitors at the top, which, you know, let in daylight, so you don't have a, kind of a dark box with no natural lighting. Uh, in that area, um, the contractor has actually installed the, uh, drywall and is currently starting to paint. This picture was taken before the painting was going on, so quite a bit of progress going on there. You can see them, you know, working from a lift.
And getting back, the atrium is like a gathering place on the second floor?
Yes, and circulation throughout the building.
Right.
Right. And there's, you know, you can't see it from this photo, but stairs that go down just beyond there that go down, you know, to the first floor. And the next photo on the, uh, left-hand side is, uh, what we refer to as a mock-up classroom. And it's, uh, kind of the area where we test-fit things, and the contractor has their subcontractors put in different parts. And, um, that's down on the first floor of the building. You can see that there's a, um, ceiling-mounted projector installed, and a, uh, one of the smart boards is installed. And then, um, they've used some masking, you know, some painter's tape to kind of show the outlines of some of the tack boards and marker boards that would be installed in the future, to make sure the spacing and so forth is right. And, and I think, um, the superintendent and several other folks from the county had the opportunity to look at that last week after a normal progress meeting. And then off to the right is the tennis courts. Um, the tennis courts have been turned over to the county. Uh, there's still some topsoil and so forth that's being installed around the outside, and I think the, um, tennis team actually practiced on the tennis courts today. So, um, that's a little bit of information about, uh, Auburn High School. I think, um, you know, looking ahead, the major work items are overhead, um, installations of utilities and getting the mechanical systems, you know, up and running, and getting power, you know, to the building. Um, the building is a hundred percent dried in. Some areas are temporarily dried in, and they're continuing to be worked on as the weather permits. And then, of course, you know, the final detailing of the roof will happen, um, you know, again, as weather permits and into the spring. But, you know, right now, save a few areas, uh, you know, there's a roof on the building that's allowing the work to move forward. Moving on to, uh, Blacksburg High School. On the left-hand side is the, uh, we, we kinda refer to it as the classroom building, and that picture's taken kinda looking northwest. And you can see, um, you know, the exterior is essentially done. Uh, there's a few areas where we, we have some windows that have been left out, some larger windows to allow the contractor to continue to move materials in and out of the building, and, you know, take debris and stuff out of the building. Um, currently, the contractor has taken all the temporary plastic off of the, off of the windows and is doing the final tweaking there. And then, you know, there's just those few areas, um, larger openings so they can get access. Uh, the roof in that building is essentially complete. There are some details and some guttering to put on, but, um, you know, it's, that building's basically dried in, save those few temporary, um, closures that they have.
Is, is there an atrium area there for the students?
There is, um, uh, you'll.
I don't remember.
Yeah, we, you may remember, uh, I remember the tour.
Yeah.
And, uh, we walked from, um, into kind of a center area, and there was that open, um, open area up above. You actually, it's up on the second floor, and you look up, you know, into the third floor, and then there's some stairwells that go down to the first floor. And in that area now, um, we don't have a picture of it, but they've installed the handrails. Um, very heavy, um, steel handrails and so forth have been installed, and haven't done the final painting, 'cause they need to get the work a little further along.
I just didn't remember gathering place at VHS.
Yeah, there's, there's several areas like that. Um, the photo on the right, um, is the area that probably has seen the most work in the last couple months. Um, this is the main entrance to the school. Uh, you can, you can see the steel structure kind of in the center. Uh, that's the media center. Um, the roof is not dried in there yet, but the contractor is progressing that way, you know, as, as the days are, are good. Uh, obviously, the last couple days were very good for roofing. Today, not so good. Um, and you can see this metal sunscreen out in front there has been installed. There's a lot of, um, detailing of the steel to be done, and that's kinda working that way, and getting the roof done is the major focus area. Uh, over on the left-hand side of the photo, you can see the, um, the high structure is the auditorium, and, um, the roof was recently completed on the auditorium. The auditorium is essentially dried in. A couple, couple areas where they have some guttering and some ridge cap to put on. And then beyond that is the, um, admin area, and, um, that roof was dried in, uh, for the most part, yesterday. The photo on the left is one of the, uh, one of the locker rooms, um, down in the athletic area. I think that is the, um, that is the girls', maybe junior varsity locker room, I think. And, uh, you can see kind of the random mixed tile pattern. Um, contractor is working in tile in that area. There's six locker rooms, so quite a bit of tile work to do there. And then the photo on the right-hand side is the track area, um, which, there's no real work going on in the track right now. The trench drain that's around it has been installed and basically waiting, you know, for the spring and the weather to clear, so that they can get back up there and do some work. Couple notes about Blacksburg High School. The science casework, um, started delivery today, and, um, will continue delivery for the next three days, and then an installation process, um, will happen with that. Um, the contractor is looking to put, um, permanent power on the classroom building sometime in the next two weeks. Uh, we have some final inspections and so forth to do, but, um, that'll be a big milestone. And I guess overall, um, I've been asked a couple times about roofing, and we're about eighty percent complete on the roofing. There are some periphery areas around the outside where the contractor is working his way out of the building that, um, you know, still need to have the roof completed on. Just some other activities that are going on. Um, Montgomery County has put out for proposals, the, all the, uh, furnishing fixtures and equipment packages. I believe most of those have come back and are under evaluation. There may be one that isn't back yet. So, uh, that process is moving along to, um, make awards for all the equipment that will have to get moved into the building, you know, at the end and hooked up. Uh, I did mention the tennis courts were turned over at Auburn High School. For Auburn Middle School, um, the team is preparing for the construction phase, and there's a pre-construction kickoff meeting scheduled for the first of March. Uh, contractor is already, um, processing their administrative paperwork, uh, with material-type purchases and that sort of thing to get ready, um, so they can hit the ground running in the summer. Um, contractor continues to be on schedule to meet the target completion dates. Um, they have been impacted slightly by weather, you know, you know, as has the school. And, uh, but they've been able to resequence some things and, you know, not really lose the time on the project. It's just kinda tightened things up quite a bit. But, um, yeah, I think the project is generally moving along, or all, both projects, all three projects are moving along in good shape, and, um, still aggressive, still have a lot of work to do. But, um, I've seen some that are in a lot worse shape than this, and I think we're all optimistic that we'll be where we need to be. Any questions?
Auburn Middle School project, is that going, are they gonna be able to hit the ground running as soon as the school's over with? Like, the last day of school, that we're gonna, is the plan today?
That is the plan.
Move right in?
Uh, that's the timeline. If, uh, we're able to move forward, then, uh, another agenda item we'll talk about this evening talks a little bit about, um, reason that we might have a need to at least retain some occupancy at Shawsville Elementary School, and it's so that we can store the things that we're gonna take out of the high school, so they can begin the renovation piece right away. So, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob, and also Tim is here. And, uh, Tim was part of the group that took us on the tour last Friday afternoon of Auburn High School. And it is indeed, uh, gonna be a beautiful school for that community and the students and, uh, families in that area, as well as the Blacksburg building. So our next one is our monthly, uh, facilities update from Mr. Berenado. Dan?
Good evening. First page, uh, talks about, at the top, is relocate, relocate mobile units. Some projects we're working on. Uh, they're still in process. We just about have the one at Auburn Middle School finished, and Kip's, moving the one from Kip's to Falling Branch will be next. We have a couple of roof projects that are funded, uh, for this summer, and those are, one is the technology building, uh, there at the intersection of Franklin and Independence. And that's under design. And also, uh, what we call Section C1 roof, which is the, over the commercial kitchen, food occupation, and consumer science portion, and also cosmetology at CHS. And that's under, under designed to be done this summer. Next page, uh, just wanted to let you know, uh, Kip's Fields Restrooms at the Towns Buildings. Uh, it's going strong. This picture I took last week, there, we're putting the glass block in, uh, under the roof eaves, and hopefully in another month or two, that'll be ready to go.
Does that mean the town of Blacksburg is funding that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Safe routes to school. We talked last time about the town of Christiansburg, uh, putting in for those, as well as Montgomery County. Wanted to let you know that the town of Blacksburg is putting in another phase of the one for Margaret Beeks, and this one is an off-site sidewalk between, along Hubbard Street between Main Street and Airport Road.
And I'm grateful for that, 'cause they do have the new fire station there.
Right.
On Hubbard, so.
And we did, uh, recently get, uh, requests from Gilbert Linkus to help them make sure they get, uh, a greenhouse, uh, correct. They got a grant for the greenhouse. It's about forty-eight square feet, six foot by eight feet. And Jess Schul was out there today, uh, helping coordinate that one.
Does that mean that's a new greenhouse?
A new greenhouse, yes, ma'am.
Is there any outside funding, or are we?
It was the foundation, I believe, provided them.
Montgomery County Educational Foundation, uh, they want a grant from us, which is helping to, uh, install that.
Excellent.
Right. So we're citing that, and, uh, I think we have to get a little permit from the town of Blacksburg for zoning, make sure everything's okay, where we put it. The next slide, uh, you had requested, uh, status on the surplus properties.
Before you talk about that, I'm gonna pass this matrix. I've been working with, uh, Craig Meadows to get, um, their, uh, verbiage regarding the status of the properties. And I got it about five o'clock this afternoon, so we couldn't get it in the presentation, but there are three copies going that way, and four copies going that way. And then, pretty much what Dan has in his, um, slide is the same as what's on there, but this came specifically from the county manager.
First four buildings, I think you know the history of, and they've all been surplused to the Board of Supervisors. Of course, Old Blacksburg High School, we had a caveat with that, that we needed to use the baseball field and the track until, uh, our new ones are ready. And we're also storing some things in those buildings, but it is technically a surplus.
And basically, that was in the, um, some of the verbiage of the financing for the new schools. But I will be bringing you an agenda item next time that will formalize that with the fact that we need to retain the use for storage and athletic fields for the short term, but to make it publicly available for them to market.
Which is that, you're talking about?
Old Blacksburg High School.
Oh, okay. Do we have any idea what the Old Blacksburg Middle School property's gonna, the, the amount that's gonna be brought to the county, uh, at all?
I don't believe that Mr. Meadows included a dollar value in that chart.
There's none of them, no?
Not until all the entities get all their, uh, specifications in order.
Are you talking about zoning? Then, uh, the final two bullets on my slide are Shawsville Elementary School and also the old school board office on Junkin Street. Uh, the next item actually on your agenda regards surplusing those.
Hey, Dan, I have a question related to Shawsville Elementary School. Um, I know with the recent flooding, there was some major damage to the softball and baseball fields. It looked like the water got up close to that school. So I'm curious if there were, was any water issues at the school, or especially the mobile buildings outside, and how we're building that into our plans and maybe using that as a storage facility?
Yeah. Uh, n, the water this past time, as in all times that I know of, uh, has never gotten into the building. When the building was built, is my understanding, the building pad itself was raised a foot above the flood level. Parking lots have flooded in the past, a, as they have this time. Of course, the ball fields have. Uh, was one of, one of many reasons why we, we moved out of, out of there. But I don't expect that it, that the storing of the furniture and equipment that's in there would be affected by future floods, knock on wood. We, just from the almost forty years that we've been in there, so.
But when you see a boat up against the fence right on the back of the school, it's a little concerning for me, yes.
We are required to have flood insurance. So under the federal program, we do have flood insurance on, uh, on the building.
And the contents?
And the contents.
Okay.
Yeah, we carry that and will as long as we're responsible for the building. The mobile units are being disposed of, so that flood insurance will go away.
But, it's not gonna be our responsibility, but.
The county, the county does the, uh, athletic field, too.
Right.
But with James' question, I wonder who might want to.
And the mobile units, we put those on our surplus website, auctioned them off, and I, I believe they've all been sold and will be taken off, uh, in the next month or two.
Which ones are those?
At Shawsville Elementary School, the odd ones.
I have a question.
Um, Falling Branch, we're talking about moving mobile units or replacing mobile units. How many mobile units do we have at Falling Branch? Off the top of your head?
I think it's eight.
But we built Falling Branch when?
Nineteen ninety-nine. We, it opened in ninety-two, I believe.
Wow.
And I've been told it, it had mobile units starting almost the year after it was.
Okay.
But a lot of them there are, are that old, twenty years old.
Wow.
So we've got a.
We think of Falling Branch as a new building, and, uh, but it was opened in ninety-two, and it's now twenty thirteen, so.
Right. So in twenty years, we've simply outgrown the building?
Yeah.
No, in twenty days, we outgrew the building.
I knew we had outgrew it earlier, but that was before.
Right.
Um, when, when the Shawsville Elementary School is sold, where will we then move the furniture and equipment?
We would have to put it in storage. It's in the agenda item that says that if the, the supervisors were to market it and have a buyer, that we needed ninety days to obtain, uh, storage facility, and it would probably cost us fifty thousand dollars.
Right. That's what I wondered.
I would say that, you know, one of the reasons I would ask that this last slide be put on there is because, you know, this does impact our budget.
Oh.
And I think that we need to make sure that, um, it, it's not brought up, I don't think, frequently enough about how we're moving with some of these properties. And I think that, uh, we need to be doing, and, and I know that Board of Supervisors is working hard, but we need to be very aggressive in moving these properties, properties as quick as we can to help with the overall budget situation. You see that we've got several here. Uh, the old BMS is just constantly dragged out. And I'm hoping, based on what I see here in the narrative, that this is finally coming to a close, but I'm not sure. And, you know, it's, that, that's a key piece. That and Old Blacksburg High School was a key piece in trying to reduce our debt, because every time we sell this property, it reduces our debt, our capital debt. And, uh, I think it, members, everybody said that, well, we're going to sell all these properties, and that's gonna help reduce our debt. So we really need to be a. So we really need to be aggressive and I, I want updates. This has got to be at the forefront of our efforts here in moving these surplus properties.
Hopefully we could have this on our agenda when we meet with the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Anything else for Dan, Mr. Berenado?
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
The next item is in regards to surplusing the Shawsville Elementary and Junkin Street properties currently operated by the Montgomery County School Board. The Junkin Street Building has been identified as not having any future need by the school division for that property. It can be declared surplus and all items removed from the building by March fifteenth. The site is, I mean, is approximately one acre and the building is sixteen thousand eight hundred and thirty square feet. The second property that we're recommending that the board approve for surplusing this evening is Shawsville Elementary School. And basically we have asked that it be surplused for the supervisors to market, but that we would retain use of it to store the property that's coming out of the Auburn High School Building while they work on the conversion for Auburn Middle School. Given a ninety day notice if they had a buyer for that property, we could move our items that have been stored into a purchased storage facility. And that particular property is seventeen point sixty-seven acres and thirty-two, thirty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-two square feet. We believe that we could transfer official ownership to the county by January fifteenth of two thousand and fifteen. But again, if they had a buyer, we could advance that day. So I've recommended this evening that the board approve the resolution to surplus Junkin Street under the conditions stated, as well as the resolution to surplus Shawsville Elementary School under the stated conditions.
Board members, this is presented to us as an action, so if we could have a motion.
So move on the Junkin Street? They're separate, right?
No, we've got them both on this one action, so we could approve both resolutions at the same time.
I move on both then.
Second.
Now for discussion. Any discussion on any of the resolutions?
The two ball fields that are at that field, that would be up to the county what to do with those fields, whether to keep that separate or include.
That is correct.
Cause I know they're actively being used, well, not at the moment, but.
Have we?
Yeah, they're underwater.
Have we taken everything out of Junkin that we possibly could?
Yes.
And is the rest of it gonna be put up for yard sale?
Yes, in fact, the last we talked about it, we were gonna tran, collect everything at the Shawsville Elementary School site and do the surplus property sale from there. Is that the plan, Walt? Yes, so we have removed the items that we could use. We have a few things left and we're in the process of moving those.
Excellent, thank you.
Any fellow discussion? Since this is a resolution, I'd like to ask for roll call on that. Disposition of property.
Aye. Aye.
Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes. Thank you, Board members.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, our next item is a legislative and budget update and it's fairly brief this evening. I've been providing you with information about our budget and about actions of the legislature which may impact our school system. Tonight I will continue that update and I offer the following information. The General Assembly continues to talk about providing some money for support employee compensation improvements. But it's not definitive yet. The session was originally set to adjourn on two twenty-three, but that is looking a little bit unlikely. Number three, the legislature has spent significant time with other legislation, including such things as school grading, school takeovers by the state, concussion bill changes, and mandatory CPR trained personnel on school campuses. You receive the VSBA briefings periodically, but I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have to the best of my ability regarding these actions. In a related matter, I presented the Montgomery County Budget to the Board of Supervisors on Monday, February the eleventh. I appreciate the support I received from you. Board member attendance was wonderful and our school-based administrators had quite a presence in the audience, as did some of our parents. It was great to have school support present in the audience and vocally evident in the public comments section of that meeting that evening. Again, I'd like to thank all of you who attended and participated in the meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about that presentation or the response that it received from the supervisors.
Any questions?
Have they, has anybody followed up on the question of why we didn't use prison inmates?
Well, I would counter. I wonder why they didn't use them to move into the courthouse. You know, we needed, we needed official movers. Primarily, we needed people who had trucks, we needed people who had blankets and who could disassemble complex furniture items and could be trusted to put them back in usable condition. And we did make very efficient use of the resources, but we didn't lose a single piece of equipment as we moved from Junkin Street to the new location here at the county government building. Also, I'll stop at that, that was enough, yeah.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, Black, when you were very complimentary about the people that came to the meeting, but I do have to say that there were seven people that spoke in favor of budget and one of those was a school board member. That's really not a good support, I don't think. We need more people coming to those meetings if we're going to be able to fill the kind of gap that we have and we're not hearing many suggestions on how to fill that gap. So without the support, it's gonna be a really hard few months coming up.
We were talking about the presentation to the supervisors. And I was asked to comment about the follow-up to the use of the prisoners for moving. And I shared some of the things you and I have already talked about in terms of that they had not been used by the county as they moved recently into a new facility and that we needed professional movers, not just strong backs to be able to get from one location to the other.
And wasn't there, because you had, you know, gone into detail about that possibility before. Wasn't there an issue about the hours?
Yes.
I mean, there were several issues related to that and I'm not sure why it continues to come up. But I just wanted to make sure that we put it to rest. We did look at it, from what I understood, and it wasn't feasible for us. And we did, we had to have the right people doing the right thing. And if, I would suggest that they focus on roads and medians and not worry about the school board. The other thing that came up was Christiansburg. Again, the sound system continues to come up, okay? And my question is, is the sound system adequate for the programs of the students and the teachers at Christiansburg High School?
Yes, it is. The reason that we needed to bring in additional speakers for the presentations that took place at our forum is that you have so many multiple microphones that you have to set up. And according to the conversation that I had with Harvey as a follow-up, that even in the new schools, that if you set up an arrangement such as we did for the forum at CHS, you would need supplementary speaker systems because you're setting up in a configuration that's totally atypical to how you would usually use a school. You're putting a panel on a stage with seven microphones and then you're having microphones that people can walk up to and speak to from the audience. So, yes, the system supports the needs of the schools at this time.
Any other comments? I feel like I'm forgetting something.
Nope, I think that was it.
All right.
Just bear with me a minute, I lost my board docs. I got it. Let me just slide. All right, the next item is our middle school scheduling model discussion that we've been having for some time. Initially, a study of scheduling models for secondary schools was one of the approved studies for consideration should the board need to do further budget reductions. While doing this study, I determined that the change to implement a schedule in which all middle school teachers teach five-sixth of the instructional day merited my recommendation for implementation because it is both instructionally sound and fiscally prudent. This evening, I recommend your approval of the modified middle school scheduling model. If you have questions, Mr. Simkins and I will be happy to address them at this time. The model is on your agenda this evening for your consideration as an action item.
Board members, questions for administration, Mr. Simkins and Ms. Blackburn?
My biggest concern.
Will you pull the mic down?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And I've stated it before is we didn't have a lot of collaboration with our teachers. And hearing from them, I understand their concern. I also understand our budget concerns. And I'd just like to hear more at this point from members of the board.
I, I would just like to share with you the reason, how we got started with this. Because we didn't start out with it as an examination of actually implementing a different schedule in the schools. We started out studying the scheduling model. We were charged, I was charged essentially, to bring you back findings about could the board potentially have cost reduction measures through more effective management of the resources in our secondary schools. And when I say resources, I'm saying the staffing resources. So all of the studies, every single one of them that we did, and we did about ten, were done largely by staff because it was a staff assignment. With the middle school scheduling model, once it was determined that the board had additional interest in it and that you might have interest in pursuing it outside of actually looking at it only as a budget or cost savings reduction measure, then we did make an effort to engage additional stakeholders. And although it was not the comprehensive engagement that you might have if you had started out with this as a study to implement a change in the scheduling model, it did provide some opportunity for principals to be involved, for representative from each middle school to be involved and for there to be discussion back at the schools regarding the models. So if the board were to approve this model, there would be additional engagement at the school level with the principals collaborating with the division and with the teachers and parents in their school community so that everybody knew what was happening and what it would look like and how it would impact the individual school.
Am I understanding correctly that a lot of the middle school teachers already teach this type of schedule?
In Montgomery County, we have ninety-three, I think it's, is it ninety-two or ninety-three? Ninety-two core teachers, meaning math, English, science, social studies, who teach five of seven classes. The remaining fifty-three teachers in the middle schools in Montgomery County who teach career and technical education programs, who teach chorus, music, any other subjects that we are offering in the middle school, already teach six of seven classes in the school day.
Do we have, I know we have a lot of different models out there. Do we have any core teachers at this point doing six of seven?
Not that I'm aware of. Mr. Simkins, are you aware of any place that there's, that that's happening? We have some modified block schedules going on where they might be doing closer to five-sixth of the day.
I did provide you with some examples of modified block scheduling that was happening. One as an example was at Auburn Middle School of sixth grade, somewhere at Christiansburg Middle, Middle School at sixth and eighth grade. And some of those teachers that they're teaching in a block may be teaching three blocks out of four.
Which would be the equivalent of the five-sixth.
That other block would be ninety minutes that they're not teaching.
That's correct.
And is that considered the planning time for them?
That would be considered their planning time.
And do we know how long these teachers have been in this model? It's been more than a year, so it's been several years.
Grab that seat on the aisle. Okay.
I'll do that. I'm not prepared to say it's been several years. I know at Christiansburg Middle School, they've been into this at least two years. Auburn Middle School started their sixth grade this year.
Started what this year?
The block.
The block?
The block, yes.
So do we have enough data to see what that does for scores for our students?
Again, the scores that we provided you, the snapshot of the scores that we provided you were one-year snapshot only. We did provide you a snapshot of other school divisions that's used a block and used different variations of a block for multiple years.
But again, the recommendation this evening is not that any school be required to go to a block. It is that all of our middle schools utilize staff, all staff, five-sixth of the day.
And it, what's been brought before us is if we were to approve that, then we're cutting twenty teaching positions.
You're reducing nineteen point six potentially teaching positions. That is an estimate. I mean, it could be not a hundred percent because we're gonna have to look at each school and make sure that they're appropriately scheduled and all subjects are covered as they should be, but it would be very close to that. It would be my intention that there would be no layoffs, that the positions would be absorbed through the usual attrition that occurs in Montgomery County schools. And that's what we have done in the past as we have reduced actual positions within the school system. To my knowledge, not a single teacher has lost a job because of a lack of a job due to any reduction in budget measure. And that would be the case with this group as well. And the other option that you have, if you don't have a perfect match, for example, if I've got one additional English teacher or one additional math teacher, then I have positions. I can use that person as a permanent sub and I guarantee you, within thirty days, I'll have a vacancy somewhere within the school system. So it is not a reduction in force in that people lose jobs. It is a reduction in the number of teachers that are assigned in our middle schools with the expectation that they would be absorbed through occurring vacancies.
Is this across all middle schools?
It's across all four middle schools.
I mean, I can understand us trying to be as efficient as we can, but our number one goal is to make sure that we're serving the students. And I have a concern about how the planning would be affected and the number of the increase in students that the teachers would be serving. Also have a concern because of the way this was bought to us as a budgetary issue and then it shifted that the input is not at the level that I'm really comfortable with. And quite frankly, the presentation, you know, with the time, I understand. And quite frankly, the presentation, you know, with the time, I understand, has not been sufficient for me as far as information as to exactly how all this is gonna work if you implement it. Also, you know, with us moving to, um, into new buildings, it's been constant for the last two years. We're gonna have so much going on, let's hold off on doing this, we're gonna have so much going on, let's, I don't wanna ask to do this at this point. Well, I don't think that this would be fair to ask for this to go in and Blacks, especially Blacksburg Middle School, to have to be asked, get resituated in your old building, now look at a new schedule and figure out how you get the planning done and the work done that you need to get done. So, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna be voting in favor of this for, um, those reasons. I just don't think, um, the way things have both, have fallen out has been fair to all the stakeholders.
Well, regarding the increase in the teacher load, the teacher load would increase by ever how many students are in one class. And currently, the average for middle schools, average class size, and remember, we all know average class size is deceptive. The average is about twenty. So, if you have a teacher now who is teaching five classes, um, of twenty students, and you add one class to them, the total student contacts would go up to one-twenty. PTR is not the same thing as teacher load. Uh, PTR is the number of students that are in front of you at any one time. And the statistical models, the mathematical models that were run on the schedule showed that there would not be an increase in the actual PTR in a class. But there would be an increase in the number of student contacts that a teacher had over the day.
When this was first brought to our attention, the very first question I asked, if we were doing this to save money or are we doing this to have the educational system be more sound? And Ms. Blackburn, do you recall your answer?
I said I would make this recommendation even if we were not looking at it as a budget reduction measure.
Exactly, exactly. So, I think it started out as not being a budget-saving item.
It did start out as being a budget-saving item.
Well, it started, yeah, it started out that way, talking about it, but it led into the fact that would you accept this even if it weren't a budgetary item? But it is. And we've gotta find savings somewhere. And nobody wants to cut any programs, nobody wants to cut any more, anything out of anything. So, we've got to find some money somewhere. And I personally like a block schedule. I've, I've had three students come through. I've got one in the seventh grade. And as a sixth grader, you know, she did the teaming and, and everything that was involved at Christiansburg that has this type scheduling. I, I like it, so I'm going to move that we accept it. I'm making a motion that we accept the five-sixth scheduling model.
I have a motion on the table. I need a second.
Is that the superintendent's? Is that your motion?
That's my recom, that was a motion to support my recommendation, yes.
Oh, did I hear, did you second? I didn't hear a second. Did you get a second?
There was no second.
Is anybody gonna make, you, Ms.?
I made a motion.
Ms. Vaughn made a motion. And I need a second before we can go into discussion.
No, we don't. It dies if there's no second.
Right. I'm, I'm saying that I still need, the board, the chair needs a second to move on.
For matter of, for matter of discussion, I'll second it.
Okay. We now have a second, so it's up for matters of discussion.
I cannot support this, this at this point, and I know there's been a lot of, um, Tom's been on it, but my concern is we have so many at-risk kids, and my concern is those are the kids that are gonna be lost in this. And for that reason, I just can't support it at this time. If it comes back as a budget reduction measure, I don't know where I'll be at that point, but at this point in time, I can't support it.
Okay. You were asking our approval of this because of the amount of time it takes to plan and schedule and do this?
That is correct. We need to, if you're gonna, uh, invest the time that you need to, to talk about it, to let everybody be involved to, uh, the appropriate extent in the remaining decisions, you need to get going now 'cause kids are getting ready to start course selection for next fall.
Well, I felt the need to, um, say a few comments that I prepared since I was the one that brought this to the head and led lots of people to get involved and, um, many teachers to be sitting in the audience late at night when they have to be up early to teach tomorrow. And I feel like bringing it, um, ahead of schedule of budget discussions allowed a lot of time, five weeks actually, of getting feedback and asking questions that coming in May, we wouldn't have even been able to do. And secondly, that this is a topic that normally school board members would not even be deciding on because it is curriculum-based, it's, it's something that is, um, you know, dealt with by people other than school members, but because it's personnel, I understand that's why we're having to do a motion on it. So, because of that, I feel like lots of details are, are getting into details that we don't need to be concerned about, that those are details that, in the motion, you've mentioned, um, that teachers, administration, and parents would be involved, and that's when the details hopefully will be worked out. Um, but I really feel like I wanna say a few things that I did prepare since I brought this, um, up ahead of schedule, I guess you could say. I do wanna thank all the teachers and the parents and others who've expressed their opinions publicly and in private about the proposed scheduling changes in the four middle schools. From my discussions with people in Blacksburg at least, it is clear that the proposed changes would be a difficult adjustment for teachers. It is not as clear to me that the quality of instruction must inevitably suffer, but it's true that teachers will see two dozen more students in a given day and have one planning period per day rather than two. Although very few teachers in our school system enjoy two planning periods per day, I do appreciate the arguments in favor of this model. The middle school years are critical. I'm deeply grateful to our teachers for their commitment to help our children learn and advance during a challenging time in their lives. And I'm very aware that this proposed scheduling, um, change comes across as ungrateful, particularly to the BMS teachers who were displaced by VHS to endure three years of commuting to a formerly mothballed facility. I've been assured that this is the last year for that. When budget cuts are an unavoidable reality, my highest priority is to preserve quality of instruction. We are faced with a three-point-seven percent shortfall of a ninety-six million dollar annual budget. And eighty-eight point five percent of that is, uh, of the ninety-six million is personnel. If this budget shortfall was a new situation or a small problem, I'd be all for finding Band-Aid measures. And it's not going to end year and year from now, probably my entire term, um, on this board. So, I think that we have to do some personnel cuts, and I, I hate this. So, for my part, I would prefer that you could tell each school and they figure out the cuts, and then of course, that's punting it on some other people to figure out these horrible decisions that we have to figure out. But I have to say that I'm going to trust Ms. Blackburn's judgment concerning this and support it.
Board members, any comments, questions?
Yeah, I need to follow up with that. I spent seven years as acting principal and assistant principal at Washington Irving Middle School up in Fairfax County. And we had a block schedule there, and, um, I really have, I really questioned page fifteen on the handout that was given to us. It, it indicates that if you, the potential impact of losing core academic middle school teachers and so on, it says lower SOL scores. There's no proof of that whatsoever. Fewer opportunities to build connections with students and families, and I've gotta say, there's absolutely no connection. There's no proof of that whatsoever either. Increased discipline referrals, I don't see that at all. I can go down there and I can say that, that this, this is speculation. What, what you have is an example of one teacher that I had in that building. And, and this is, this is, this can be any building, it can be all buildings. As, I was there seven years, and this particular teacher never sent a child to the office, never. And when you walked in his class, it was vibrant, there was activities. He was in contact with all the students in there, he was engaging, and things were working. And, and I know that that's what we have sitting out in the audience, we have that type of teacher sitting on the audience right now. I, I can't, I can't justify teachers being responsible for just a hundred students. I, I have a very difficult time with that when, when I, I, um, know that the teachers that I had were working with a hundred-and-twenty-five, a hundred-and-thirty students and were being incredibly successful. And I know this was several years ago, but still, I know that this presentation that, uh, Ms. Blackburn, that you presented, I know it works. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, picking up on what you're saying, Joe, um, I was talking to my daughter out in Colorado, and her, my two grandchildren were in middle school with thirty and thirty-five in a classroom, and I'm just very torn about this, I'm extremely torn. And, uh, I, I just don't know where we turn at this point. And with Sarah, there weren't that many out to the Board of Supervisors meeting, and we're so dependent on everyone else for our money, and it's coming down to money, we may just have to do this. I don't know if we can prolong it until we see what money we get. But I, I really been in a lot of agony over this.
Any other comments, questions, uh, me personally?
No, uh, I just wanna say these, this is the middle school model. You know, these, these children are in a very critical time of their life. They can pivot one way or the other, I've, I've watched it happen. Personally, did not have such good experience with the team modeling with one of my children. But the other things were fine. But that goes with all kids and however they are best served. Mr. Ivors, you use the, the cliche many times, if it's not fixed, if it's not broke, why fix it? You know, I understand at some point, as Ms. Foster said, we may need to do this because we've got to find the money to do it. I'm not prepared to do it now.
Well, it's definitely a difficult, it's probably one of the most difficult decisions I've got before me 'cause I've had two kids go through the Blacksburg Middle School and one, and a third one finishing up. And, and I understand the importance of planning time, uh, absolutely do. I understand that our middle school teachers have suffered greatly and endured greatly in moving across into the Christiansburg community and travel back and forth as well as the students and well as the parents have endured, and hopefully that has come into a conclusion. Uh, it, it, I understand and some, I appreciate the emails, I appreciate the, the comments, uh, the response to the emails. I understand that the non-core teachers, uh, are teaching five-sixth because that was due to another budget reduction that occurred a number of years ago. It, I, I, I struggle with the fact that we have the core versus the non-core and that there's a disparity there. I also struggle with the fact that we've got four middle schools, but we have, not all the middle schools are saying that this is a bad idea. And they're not, I mean, if this, you know, I ask a question, if, if this is such, and I, I'm sure it's, it's, it's a great model. I know it's a great model. I remember, uh, Mr. McCoy standing up and talking about the model when my first child went through and the changes that were gonna be made. But it's difficult when we are also faced with the challenges that we have from a budgetary standpoint and the fact that we're not probably going to get what we have asked for and that we're asking for another five cents on the real estate tax dollar. And we have to keep that in mind, that's, we, we have to balance, we're balancing, trying to balance both things. If other schools were here and telling me that this is, everybody needs to use this model and everybody needs the same amount, you know, I'm, I'm all for it. And if we had the ability to do the, uh, things we need to do with the budget, I'm all for it. Uh, I don't want to sit up here and eliminate nineteen positions. I agonize over that. I agonize over all the different changes that we're asking people to make. But we've got a much, we've got an entire division that we've got to serve, not just small pockets. It, I've said it, this dies for the past two years. And every idea that this board and this administration has brought before this board and this community has somehow turned out to be a bad idea for a certain group or a certain part of the community. And then we get challenged because we're not tough enough to make the tough decisions. They're not willing to step up and make the tough decisions. I don't necessarily agree with that statement all the time. Okay? I think that we have stepped up and we've made some pretty tough decisions over the past several years. And none of those have been difficult, I mean, none of those have been easy, I should say. With that, we must move forward, we've got to think about the entire division. And so, uh, I'll conclude my comments with that. Any final comments?
Would it be possible to table this until we see what we do get from the Board of Supervisors?
I don't think so, not according to the superintendent.
I sent you their, their calendar, and you won't know what you're getting from the state until at the earliest February the twenty-third. And I believe the, um, supervisors', um, first, uh, conversation is like the second week in March or, or something. I didn't bring, that's the one, that's the one piece of paper I didn't bring with me. But I didn't bring that one, but, uh, I think really and truly to implement it in a effective way for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, it's best to make the decision early. And again, I re, you know, I still stand by the recommendation, and that is that after the review that was done, I feel like that this is a good approach regardless of whether you're doing it for, um, a budgetary concern, or you're doing it because it might serve our students or may very well serve our students just as well as the model that we're doing now. And in some cases, it might do a better job.
Well, when I heard what Dreama said about our children that are struggling in school, and I hadn't put it in that perspective before, that was, um, that they do get more attention is what we're hearing, right?
Any final comments? You got the motion on the floor, I'm gonna ask for a roll call on this.
Ms. Auburn?
I just don't know, just... I had been for it, and then I'm hearing this. I think I'll vote no with Ms. Foster because of what she was saying.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Mr. Ivors?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Ms. Carey?
Our next item this evening is the... Our next item this evening is the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school calendar. At an earlier meeting, the board approved calendar standards to support the development of our calendar for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. There were two changes from past practice. First, there was a change in the composition of the committee to assure broad and equitable representation of various employee groups, areas of the county, and parents. Second, the board approved a one-year-only standard in which school would start for students no earlier than Wednesday, September fourth. This would allow us to maximize our summer opportunity for opening AHS, BHS, meeting BMS back to Blacksburg and preparing for the construction at AMS. Lois Graham chaired our committee this year, and at this time, she will address the board about the proposed calendar presented for your information this evening.
Good evening. Just wanted to share that the calendar committee met on February the fourth. And attendance was, was very good, very strong, strongly represented by the committee members. And it was nice to have the equal representation across the county from the way that the committee was, the constraints of the committee this year. So appreciate approving that. And I certainly want to thank the committee, they did an excellent job and came to almost a hundred percent consensus on, on most of the items that we looked at. We used the parameters that were set by the board, which included, as Ms. Blackburn said, starting the upcoming school year on September the fourth. I won't go through all the parameters again, but we'll just like, highlight a few that the preference was to start school on a Wednesday, which we did in the draft calendar that we've given you. And to provide three orientation days for new teachers, and those days would be August twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-sixth. Eleven elementary release days are usually in the calendar. And this year, by the recommendation of the committee, we changed two of those early release days to all student early release days. And that was per the request of the secondary teachers to have an early release day at the end of each semester. We also, you had a preference for a two-week winter break, which we were able to include. You said to consider scheduling a week for spring break, giving this, given the start of this calendar in September and the late dismissal, we did not try to do a, a week of spring break. Two items which differ from our past practice were recommended by the committee and included in the calendar. Members wanted to have a four-day weekend at Labor Day, and so therefore the instructional staff would not work on August the thirtieth and September the second. And we were able to include that in the calendar, was strongly recommended by the calendar committee. A second item was secondary schools expressed the desire to have the early release day during exams at the end of each semester, which I just mentioned. And so to accommodate that most efficiently, two of the eleven early release days for elementary schools were changed to an all early release. Those two days specifically were January twenty-ninth and June nineteenth. The early release on June nineteenth would move to June eleventh if the county does not incur any inclement weather. Excluding the inclement weather days, each semester would include ninety days. There was one committee member who felt that we should stay with something like ninety-one and eighty-nine. That could be done simply by moving the January thirtieth and thirty-first to the beginning of February, if you wanted to entertain that. But the committee itself did not go ahead and, and support that. The remainder of the calendar follows past practice. And please note that Thursdays in October and November are possible dates for the Virginia Tech game that we talk about each year. We do not have the date of that game as of yet, that necessitates an early release day. So should that date fall in the same week as a teacher workday, we would need to adjust the date of the teacher workday. Other than that, I think pretty much everything follows the same pattern. I will note that several members wanted to express their thanks to the board for this current school year calendar. They loved getting out and making the first semester in prior to the holiday. However, they also realized the priority for next year is to be able to move in as a unified school system. So my thanks to the committee, and I will leave it for questions.
When does the first semester end?
I will have to look, but I think it's January. End of January.
Yeah.
I wanted to ask a question about some news that was in the paper about Salem schools where they switched their secondary grading periods from six weeks to nine weeks. And if we've looked at that in the past and if we've ever thought about switching?
I would comment that it has come up a couple of times since I've been here in my superintendent's advisory. And we already have our elementary schools on nine weeks, but our secondary schools have been on six weeks. With the, the last time the idea came up in the superintendent's advisory, I stated that after one full year of implementation of the parent portal, that I would certainly consider that. Parent portal gives parents basically twenty-four-seven access to what's going on in the academic classroom. This is our first year of full implementation of parent portal. And I'm not exactly sure others on the board know the history of how that discussion has taken place, but I would not be opposed to a recommendation that we move to a nine-week grading period.
The benefits that Salem schools are talking about are cost savings, less paperwork and less work on the teachers to have to do that every six weeks. But also it's more instructional time during a longer chunk of time. So I, I think that I would like to recommend that to take that back to the different, the secondary schools to find out if that's something they'd like to entertain for this calendar year, if that's doable.
The change is doable as far as the calendar is concerned.
It wouldn't, it would not impact this overall calendar other than changing the line at the end of them.
And would that be the process that Sarah's recommending? To take it to the secondary school teachers?
So how exactly is it a safety?
Yeah, not yours, she said.
Well, it's a time savings for teacher time, obviously, because they have to prepare the end of the term reports six times during a six-weeks grading schedule and four times during the regular school year. As far as cost savings, I guess it's the generation of the actual physical report card that the, and the computer time that may be required to do the grading assessment. Because I've not done an analysis, I just know that it is a savings in teacher time.
I've been in two school systems where the elementary moved from six weeks to nine weeks, and that was one of the primary reasons of you were doing report cards every time you turned around. So this gave a teacher more time to really look at the child's performance. They felt like they gave better information to parents. And with parent portal, that already is a cost savings on creating a paper report card. But that's where the cost savings was before parent portal.
Well, I guess that's the reason for my question, is we've got your parent portal and then it's, it's, to me, a data entry or a data entry into the computer system as opposed to the traditional way of doing it. I'm, I'm not sure, it sounds to me like it's somewhat of a wash. But I recall, and Ms. Franklin, you may need to help me here, and some other board members, but I thought we had a presentation that where we went a, the, we went to six weeks because of being able to do interventions sooner. I, it was one year that we, we've been down this road before talking about this, and we, we, we were at nine weeks and then we tightened it up because of certain advantages to it. And now we, I don't know, I'm not opposed either way, I'm just trying to understand, you know? If it truly is a...
Is this some?
Could you take this back to your committee? And you have teachers and parents, a mix?
Could certainly take it back, I'm not sure that it really changes the calendar other than drawing the line of when the end of the nine weeks is. It's probably more a secondary issue for middle schools.
We'd be glad to get you some input from secondary teachers. As I said, they have brought it up two times in my superintendent's advisory group since I've been here.
So if they would want to move to that, I think Sarah's thoughts on it make a lot of sense.
The last controversial thing about the calendar was last year about starting, we wanted to end the part of the semester before the winter break. And I've heard that that's been very successful and that everybody loves that. That even though we didn't like starting early, we got a lot of feedback about starting early.
We got a lot of negative on a period.
Yeah. It seemed that now that we've done that, that that was very beneficial to everybody, even the students, the whole testing, everybody, come back after the break with a fresh start. I understand why we're not doing it this year, but are we going to try to go back to that the next year?
The members of the calendar committee certainly like that idea, I don't know, you'll have a shorter summer this year.
I mean, you know, our, our school calendar is not going to be what normal for about two or three years until we get all moved into these high schools. But the feedback that I've been receiving is that that was, didn't like starting early, but boy, we sure did like finishing up before Christmas and not having to worry about coming back after the break and, and jump into testing.
Are you hearing that too, Ms. Blackburn?
Oh, I've heard very, very positive things about the, the calendar ending of the semester.
Is there a reason both June nineteenth and twentieth are early release days? Because I don't remember ever seeing two together like that before.
That was the request that I mentioned secondary schools made, that they wanted to have one of the last exam days be an early release. And elementary said, certainly we can accommodate by making that one of our early release days. So they did it at midsemester and at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lois, and thank you for chairing that committee, I appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is unfinished business by school board members. Board members, you have any unfinished business?
I would like to get a status update on what's going on with Falling Branch. I know there have been a lot of meetings that have occurred over the last couple of weeks, there are some meetings coming up. Ms. Blackburn, can you just give us, and I hate to put you on the spot like that, but can you just give us an update of where those issues stand?
I'd be happy to tell you what I know. First, I would start by drawing the board's attention back to some information that I shared with you in a recent board update, in which I made you aware that I had requested a meeting with the chiefs and the sheriff from our local law enforcement agencies. And the purpose of that meeting was for us to come back together and take a comprehensive look at safety and security across all of our schools. And I elicited the support of our own internal experts rather than doing as many school divisions have done, which is to seek an outside consultant. A neighboring school district recently spent about forty thousand dollars for a second visit and had spent two hundred and sixty thousand dollars prior to that for a review of their schools. And so I spoke with the chiefs, I asked them if they were willing to help us with their expertise and avoid the expenditure, and they were. So out of that meeting, several things happened. One is that all of our schools now have a law enforcement officer that's specifically assigned to that school by the jurisdiction. So if it's a Christiansburg school, then the Christiansburg Police Department has assigned a liaison officer to that school, Falling Branch included. Also, each of the, the law enforcement agencies, that liaison officer in most cases will be, meet with the crisis prevention team at the school. The other things that we decided to do, we decided that they would go back and have their crime prevention officers take another look at our schools and do a thorough walkthrough and come back to us with some potential recommendations. Not for a one-size-fits-all kind of solution for every school, but to make recommendations based on the specific needs of the school. I've, I am in the process of scheduling a, a second quarterly meeting for the first week in April. And one of the agreements that we came out with is that the chiefs and myself and select members of my staff and their staff would meet quarterly each year. So we're doing, you know, four meetings a year to just talk about what is the safety perspective for our schools. We also identified some schools that we wanted to look at as the first priority for observation. And the schools that were identified in the first priority for observation were our open space schools because they have some very unique needs, and Falling Branch because it has some very unique needs, and any school that has portable classrooms. So although I've not been doing a lot of talking in the press, you know, we've been doing a lot of things with the right people to reassess what are the additional security measures that might be recommended for our school. While those things were just getting underway, an issue occurred again with Falling Branch, and the issue was related to the proximity of the nearby park and ride. Some of you may recall that back in the fall of two thousand and ten, not long after the park and ride had opened, that we began to have some problems with people from the park and ride lot going to our school because there was no area that they could be in out of the weather. There was no bathroom facility or anything on the park and ride lot. So after multiple letters, Mr. Shannon started it even before I came on board at Montgomery County Schools. But late in the fall of two thousand and ten, we worked with the county manager with VDOT and I think it's the Metropolitan Planning Board or Commission. And some improvements were made on the park and ride lot. The improvements included a small sheltered area and a porta potty, but it's, but it's a nice porta potty from what I understand. So that, that helped a little bit. But the school meanwhile, you know, developed a protocol for dealing with folks who came to the school. For the most part, the people say, turn around and leave. But they are obviously looking for additional amenities, they're looking for a place to charge a phone, they're looking for a place to go to the bathroom, more commonly than, in the past than now. They're looking for a place where it's warm, where they can be out of the, the cold. And the shelter that's at the park and ride is very small. So there's a protocol at Falling Branch to address any time that a traveler comes asking for use of the facilities. The protocol has included the addition of additional signage outside the school indicating that this is a school and that they cannot accommodate travelers. There are signs on the doors and they've been there for some time. So over the last three-year period, one of the things that the school began to do is they began to keep a log of how many times someone came from park and ride and ask if they could use some facility of the school. There've been approximately, in just over a three-year time period, there've been approximately fifty instances that were logged in which a traveler came to the school and asked for some amenity, the use of some amenity. Of those fifty, nineteen either were rude, didn't want to leave, or whatever. And part of the protocol is that you immediately call law enforcement if the traveler is not receptive. The, there has, and of those nineteen calls, there's been no criminal activity, none. And never has a traveler come in contact with a student. They've come into the front office. The latest traveler who came to the Falling Branch school left the office after having been denied access to the school, went around the corner to the cafeteria and found that the cafeteria door was unlocked. The cafeteria door was unlocked, it was an early release day, there were no students in the school other than those who were at the adventure club. The cafeteria door was unlocked to facilitate access of parents coming to pick up their kids from adventure club. That was February sixth. Immediately upon hearing that that traveler had come into that side door, and he did, he came in, went straight into the bathroom, the school protocol went into place. He was seen by a custodian who immediately notified the front office, who in turn, one of the administrators phoned the police, the other one went and stood in front of the restroom until the traveler came out. When the traveler came out, he was asked to leave, and he did so. And he was met... And he was met in the parking lot at the park and ride by law enforcement. Immediately upon, uh, my knowledge of that, all of the schools that have a before and after care program. Were notified that the door for parent entrance had to be handled in one of two ways, well, three ways actually. It had to be locked and it must be either manned or they have to develop another system for allowing parent access such as a cell phone call. That they need to be met at the door. So all elementary schools, including those that where we operate our own, uh, childcare program have implemented that procedure since then. The, um, town became, town of Christiansburg became aware of the situation because of the concerns the parents were expressing. The town held a special meeting last Friday evening. We were invited. I was unable to attend. I advised them that I was unable to attend. The invitation came late on a Wednesday and the meeting was for Friday night at seven PM. We were not consulted or asked about the acceptability of the meeting time for any member of the board. The meeting, uh, I watched the video of the meeting today. During the meeting, the, uh, town of Christiansburg, uh, agreed that they would, um. Seek the school board's approval to place a school resource officer at Falling Branch for a period of three weeks, starting today. Over the last few days, I've spoken with each of you or emailed each of you and had a contact with you, seeking your, uh, support for that to happen. And indeed, the school resource officer did begin, um, his, uh, three-week tour at Falling Branch today. The additional things that have been happening behind the scenes include my personal, uh, multiple conversations with, uh, the county manager. With the, um, regional director of VDOT, Rob Carey. Uh, Mr. Jones has personally reached out to, uh, the Megabus, which is one of the ones that has travelers who are coming from far away. Um, the, um, I received a call in my office today from Mayor Ballengee. Asking, um, Montgomery County Schools to participate in an additional meeting which has been scheduled for Thursday afternoon at three o'clock. He asked, um, that I attend and that a board, a representative of the board specifically requested the board chair. Others who are invited to that meeting are the principal of the school. It is the town's meeting, they called it. Um, the, uh, VDOT, again, they are making notification to the bus, uh. Smart Bus and Megabus, uh, of course Chief Sisson, whom I also spoke with, I think three or four times over the weekend. Um, so that meeting is being planned. And one of the things I was gonna, you know, make the board aware of this evening is that invitation. And, uh, whether you desire for me to participate and/or have a board member, uh, represent the board at that meeting. Uh, the idea is for that group to look at short-term and long-term, um, interventions that would improve the security of the Falling Branch campus. Um, I would reiterate that I believe that Falling Branch is a safe school. And I believe that all the schools in Montgomery County are safe schools. I think we have a very unfortunate, uh, choice of neighbors that have created, uh, some very, uh, some additional, um, considerations and concerns for Falling Branch. Which they've handled very, very well. And again, I would repeat, there's been no criminal charges filed as a result of any of the contacts, uh, that have been made either, even with the police. And, um, there's been no contact by a traveler with a student in the school. But there is a need for us to find a better way, uh, to, uh, handle travelers who are coming off that, uh, park and, uh, ride. And there are a number of things under consideration, including, uh, the long-term plan to look for a different location for park and ride. Um, Megabus is talking about whether they could provide security because my first, um, request was that we don't have a problem. Until someone comes onto our campus. So if there's security in the park and ride lot, then the likelihood of us having a problem is diminished. Uh, VDOT is talking about perhaps some additional fencing. Uh, so a number of folks are talking and, uh, trying to work to, in concert, uh, to improve, uh, the security around that campus.
And, and I'll add that, uh, I reached out to, uh, the Megabus people, which is actually operated by Coach USA. Uh, was able to get ahold of, of those individuals and, and as of recently as this morning, received an email saying they're trying to contact a local security company and place some security there. And I appreciate that. Uh, they said they were not able to, at this point, to change their route times, which, um, I was a little bit disappointed in that. Uh, hoping that they could modify their route pickup times so that we can co- coincide with when the school is in session. Uh, that would be somewhat, it's optimal. Um, this is an issue for VDOT and Coach USA. They are the ones that have the property, own the property and operate on that property. Uh, this is, uh, we have done our part. The school board and, and the staff and administration here at Montgomery County has done their part. And I applaud the superintendent and her staff and the staff at Falling Branch for what they've done. It is a safe school. Uh, they did put the proper protocols in place. The school is now locked. Uh, as all schools, I understand. Uh, so, you know, we're responding and trying to be cooperative and be the best neighbor. I'm appreciative of what Christiansburg wants to do, uh, and putting an officer out there, that's fine. Uh, but, uh, we, we're very capable of handling it and been working it and handling it in the best possible way. Uh, and working with the different entities. But this is a VDOT and a Coach USA issue. This is, uh, you know, it impacts the schools. And I've been very clear to VDOT in a recent email that they need to respond with a, a sense of urgency. And they need to respond swiftly. Uh, responded to Coach USA that they need to respond with a sense of urgency. And they need to respond swiftly. Uh, I'm not interested in waiting three weeks. Okay? Uh, that this, I'm not interested in attending a bunch of meetings talking about what we need to do. We know what we need to do. Somebody needs to take action and just do it. Because we're talking about the safety of the kids. Sitting around in meetings doesn't get anything solved, in my opinion. So, you know, we, we've just, somebody needs to say, this is what we're going to do and this is how it's going to be done and step up to the plate and make it happen. And I believe those two entities are VDOT and Coach USA. And they need to, to move after it. Um, you know, lots of, unfortunately, there's a lot of misinformation. I think that, you know, floating around out there about what's going on in the school. You know, I believe that if lo- local law enforcement saw a lot of danger out there at that school. They'd come to us and they'd say, you've got a very dangerous situation and we need to be onsite immediately. And that didn't occur because of their assessments that they've already done. So, you know, I, I think that protocols have been done. We have been addressing it and we have been trying to be cooperative and work with those entities. And I know that Coach USA says that when they drop off riders at that patrons at that location, multiple announcements are made. That they are not to step foot on the school property to those people as they exit the bus. Uh, that also say that they have stuff posted on, inside the bus. I'm not aware of that, but that they make announcements and now have things posted inside the bus. Saying, don't step foot on the school property. Um, you know, there's always going to be that one individual that just ignores everything and does what they want to do. And unfortunately, we ran into that. And, uh, you know, I, again, I think that we're working it. Um, uh, it wasn't, I was invited to the meeting on Friday night. Um, I had other plans. I could not make the meeting on Friday night. And, you know, uh, uh, I'll try to make the meeting this week. I plan on going, I think it's Thursday at three o'clock.
Yes.
Um, you know, I will be there as best I can, uh, even though it impacts the work schedule.
Why would they make it three o'clock?
Because they don't, you know, excuse me, Mr. Jones.
Oh, go ahead.
Cause you, you're talking about protocol and it being done. Well, on the school board's side, protocols to how we are investigating and making sure that law enforcement is engaged in the school system. And how we're making sure that the buildings are safe, that's been done. But the protocol between two boards, council and board, however you want to put it, it's the same thing. That has not been, that did not take place. And no board summons another board to a meeting. Or make folks believe that another one doesn't care because they're not present. Especially when you're not contacted to say, what is your availability? You know, the issue of putting an officer, which I have to ask the question, is this a trained resource officer or is this just a police officer that's at the building?
It is the officer who's currently their dear officer. So I do not know if he's been to SRO school or not, but he is currently active in that school.
Okay. Uh, that issue could have been addressed with the conversations that the superintendent was having with the mayor. With the, uh, town manager and with the chief of police. And bought to this board very quickly and said, this is what we've come up with. Are we going to proceed? Which did happen, but it happened the wrong way, plain and simple, you know? Um, this meeting on Thursday, again, we were not consulted at a three o'clock meeting. You know, on a, on tonight, Tuesday, if you can make that. That's just not the way things should be done because it puts folks in a very bad situation. If you can't make the meetings that folks think you should be at because someone else has set the date. I mean, we have tried to work very closely with the board supervisors and meeting with them to build relationships. And when we look at meeting dates, we do all we can to make sure that we're going to get the, uh, largest participation with several dates. You know, I understand the urgency with this issue that folks are feeling. But I do believe it could have been handled and was being handled. You know, and, and those things were not bought out because of the parents that I have talked to and helped them understand. That our superintendent and our board chair both have been in communication with all other entities involved. Um, they weren't aware of that. They weren't aware of that. They thought that we were just sitting back doing nothing. And the town of Christiansburg was taking care of the situation and that's the way things were going to be. Um, would love to build a relationship with that council. When I was board chair, tried to do that and I couldn't even get them to return a phone call. Um, so.
Well, Ms. Blackburn, I thank you for providing all that information. For me, it was more about that information becoming public. So that people understand that we are responding, um, because there's a lot of misinformation out there.
Yes.
People think we're not reacting to this at all. So I appreciate your very thorough presentation of the information, especially being put on the spot.
And I think some of that comes from the fact that we're not responding how some people want us to respond.
Exactly.
Or how we, they think we should respond. And, and that's where some of the misinformation comes from because they don't get the answer they want to hear. Okay? Uh, and unfortunately, we know what we're doing in trying to secure these schools and secure, uh, make sure the students are safe. You know, and as we have read in the past, schools are one of the safest places that kids can be.
That's right.
Okay?
Yeah.
And, you know, I, uh, uh, firmly believe that and, uh, I just, it's a lot of stuff. I hope they take as active interest in our budget situation as they've taken in our security situation. We certainly could use their support in trying to secure the budget.
That's good.
And maybe they want to step up to the table and contact the right people and help us with our budget situation.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Along with our security situation.
But we need to stay vigilant with this. And the other thing is, December nineteenth, the superintendent sent a, uh, video out to all of us. And it was in reference to school safety.
Right.
And if you haven't looked at it, go back to your emails on December nineteenth and check it out. It's a phenomenal, uh, report. And it's exactly what, uh, Mr. Jones just said, schools are the safest place you can be. We still need to be vigilant.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Jones, if you're not able to make it, I did email Brenda back and copied the board that if you needed a board member, I, I would be able to go.
I'll be there.
Oh, good.
Ms. Franklin, uh, we have insurance committee.
Good.
That's.
I'll be there.
That's, yes.
Well, and one quick comment too, on top of what Ms. Blackburn was talking about, all the things that have been put in place years ago. They also educate the students on what happens if you see someone. When they started putting up signs. I mean, having three that went through that school, it is a safe school and that staff tries very hard. A lot of the comments that are made make it sound like they're not making an effort. And clearly with what we have seen, and I know from my students, they are, they're trying, they, they've educated the students. If you see someone, do this. If, you know, putting up signs, they're aware of what's happening in their school. I think we need to make, make sure people understand that too.
Well, I'm hoping that they may change the spot, the place where the buses are stopping. And I was hoping maybe the Christiansburg Industrial Park could be a spot, a site. But I've learned that all those, um, areas have been sold, the whole site, the park has been sold. But I'm just deep down hoping that we can see the site moved. And I ride the bus. I take it up to DC, so.
Ms. Blackburn, were she, were you asking for our input as to you attending that meeting? Uh, for me, um, from what you have said, that all parties are going to be at that meeting. I think it's important that you are because you have been in contact with all of these folks. I'm not talking about one.
Oh, Bren.
Um, but again, I just have big concerns and I've expressed it for many years. And most recently, you know, we were elected to take care of the schools and, and we're, we're doing that. Okay? Like Mr. Jones said, everyone doesn't agree with everything that goes on and that goes with anything that you do. You know, it's rare in my life I've ever had someone agree with everything that I've, you know, said or not said. But, um, I think it's important for us to be present. But I also think it's important that folks understand when you want to work with the school system, then you need to use the protocol. To work with the school system.
Other item of unfinished business is a resolution from the board of supervisors. Uh, I think I indicated to you earlier in a, in the email that, uh, the resolution in, in the liaison meeting, uh, with the, the county. Specifically the board chair of the, of the county and, uh, Mr. Metta's. It's clear that what, they want the full amount, the four hundred thousand dollars to be spent on capital maintenance projects. And not on feasibility studies. They indicated that if we determine in our, uh, planning meeting, I think it's next week, we have a, a capital planning meeting next week.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. That if we determine out of that, that we needed money to begin the long-range plan in the Christiansburg strand, that they would be glad to listen to that and, and potentially fund it in that manner. But this four hundred thousand dollars is to be spent entirely on maintenance for the school division. Uh, we have a list of projects that are needed and we've got some additional information, uh, related to the recent study by, uh, I can't think of the.
Cardnutech.
Cardnutech. And so, you know, we've, we've got it. Um, we do want the four hundred thousand dollars contrary to what some have said. Uh, but as Ms. Franklin has said and several other members, uh, we're the board. We've been elected to oversight and we will decide where the money is spent on what it is spent on. I'm appreciative of what the board of supervisors are doing and we certainly will put that to use. But once it comes over, it will be spent on capital maintenance. And then we will put together, working with the administration on a priority on how it's spent. And it will be spent on, uh, items of critical need and it will be spent on items in all schools throughout the county. So you have it before you, uh, but just request, uh, I don't think there is, uh, action necessarily here other than we, uh, I think the letter has been re, uh, worded. To take out the feasibility study, part of it. And we would like, uh, your blessing to go ahead and send the, uh, letter over to Mr. Metta's, the county administrator requesting the four hundred thousand dollars for capital ma- capital maintenance projects. And, uh, go from there.
So.
Yeah, I, I just.
Okay.
Anybody have any concerns with?
No.
Moving forward in that manner?
In the letter, does it indicate there's going to be a feasibility study?
No.
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 Okay.
It's been completely taken out.
Good.
Right. I, I just hope that when we determine. I, I just hope that when we determine, because I believe this board has said by, in that resolution that we sent to them, we believe there needs to be a feasibility study done so that we can do the planning we need to do.
Right.
So that when we come back to them with that request, that it's not going to fall on deaf ear, because we just don't have the money right now.
Right. And that's, my conversations with the board chair and the county manager was that you come back to us with the request, and we'll discuss how we can help fund that if that's what's needed. Of course, we know that's what's needed, but right now, their, their most urgent need is capital, and wanting us to use it for capital maintenance projects, so... Any other items of unfinished business by school board members? Any items of new business by school board members?
I have one item. I would like to request to just learn some more information about what is called, like, I think, two things, benchmark testing and interactive achievement testing in our school system. From what I understand, this is, these are some testing that is not state mandated, it's our school system has decided to do it, so I'd just learn more, I'd like to learn more on how much it costs and the, why we think that it's important to do it.
I'll provide you some more information in the update, but just as a quick response, I think it's important for the board to know that of the 137 school divisions in Virginia, 105 of those school divisions use interactive achievement. And the benchmark testing, we spend $52,000 for, for all of our schools, and they're done two times per year for reading and three times per year for math, but I'll provide you some more in-depth information about them.
So, the $52,000 is the, the whole year for everything?
Do you want that to be an agenda item for future days? Or just to put it in the board update?
It can be on the agenda, that'd be nice.
Agenda item?
So, we could discuss, yeah.
Okay. I mean, there was some wild numbers being flowing around here that we're spending millions of dollars on testing, and we're testing kits to death.
Does that factor in? Because one thing that it does do is it, it takes up the entire technology labs in the school, and basically, the whole school is dedicated to this every, twice, you know, when, twice a year in reading and twice a year in math, and grades, for example, in elementary school, second through fifth, so, I don't, you can't really put a dollar figure on that, but it is quite a disruption, or you might not want to call it a disruption since it's important, but...
We'll put it back, we'll put it on the agenda and ask Dr. Graham to provide us a bit more information, as well as Mr. Simpkins, because we do benchmark testing with our secondary students as well.
Any other items of new business by school board members?
Well, I wanted to ask, I put in front of you a bill that's been sent to us by the National School Board Association, and I don't know whether this is the right time to do it, or maybe we could, you all could take it home and look at it, it was sent to us, asking, it's a general education provisions bill, we've got the NSBA at the house, and I think it's a really important thing that we as a board would send to our legislators in Washington, saying basically that we are in control of our local school system, and not to be dictated by others, but I would just like for you to... Pardon?
I said timely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, I don't know, we, you haven't had a chance to really look through it, I'd love to put it out there, and then maybe, I don't know if we can make a motion on Tuesday or not, at our, at our next meeting, was it the twenty-eighth?
No, can't do it at that meeting.
No, I didn't think so. So, then our next regular meeting, if we could move on this and send it to our legislators, I would really appreciate it, I think...
Well, I guess my question would be, why do we need a meeting for that? I mean...
Ah, well, so that you could, yeah, I mean, if you want, if, I'd be glad to move that we do it tonight.
We can't, you can't motion under this.
Exactly, we can.
So, I mean, do you, I guess the question on the table is, do you want the su, do we want to direct the superintendent to write a letter of endorsement from this board pertaining to this bill? I haven't read it, so I can...
Exactly, that's...
Okay, so, you know, if you want to bring it up...
Yeah, two weeks, two weeks.
You know, two weeks from now is our first meeting in, in, uh, March.
March.
I'm trying, losing track of months, I'm sorry, after eleven.
Yeah. I mean, that's a bit of a ways down the pike, but I think it's better than nothing, so I'd like to put it out there that we put it on as a business.
I'll work with the superintendent.
Super, super, thank you.
This is almost March.
Yeah.
I think maybe if we were planning to do some type of retreat this year...
You know, I had that, I'm glad you brought that up, that was on the things I forgot to bring up tonight, Liz. I had it all pulled out and everything. Yeah, we had our last retreat, we probably need to put that as an agenda item on our next meeting if we can, take a look at it. Our retreat last year was at the end of May, I did pull that information out, and actually, if you go to the library section of your board docs, not there, is it library?
There it is.
Uh, under non-category, non-categorized, you will see that the 2012 May Retreat File Report is there for you to take a look at. Thanks for reminding, Ms. Franklin.
Where do you find that?
I'll show it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other items of new business by school board members, or, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm under announcements and information?
Under announcements, I'd also like to talk about sequestration. We did send a letter as a board to our national political figures, and possibly, I gave you a copy of, again, what I got from NSBA, and rather than saying, we, the members of Montgomery County School Board, I would encourage every one of us to write to our congresspeople, you can just get on the web and do it, and send it to your friends, and get everybody writing to them about sequestration. It's this other piece that, that I copied from NSBA, and if we don't do it, who's going to do it, is my point. And so, I'm really hoping that we can be active regarding this as individuals, out to our friends as well, please.
Any other announcements and information?
The Black History Quiz Bowl will be this Saturday at CHS at two o'clock. We have five teams from across the county, and it's a lot of fun, a lot of education, so I hope folks will come out.
What time does it start?
It's free, two.
Two, okay. Any other announcements and information? Upcoming school board meetings, you see agenda prep, we, February the twenty-eighth at seven PM, special session on capital improvements and planning. Location of that is where, is that next door, Ms., are we over here or in here? In here, we're in here, okay. And then you see the March fifth and the March nineteenth meeting. Need a motion for adjournment?
Some move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Board members, sorry for the length of the meeting, members of the audience, thank you, drive home safely.